Is there, is there some sort of presentation? Because at a hearing, we're supposed to have a presentation.
So, no, just a brief overview. We currently offer school choice for grades six through 12. And there are roughly 70 students enrolled in the program. You know, and the administration's recommendation is to keep that as is for the next year.
Did you say seven or 70?
Seventy.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Is what I have, but that was late August, so it may have changed since then. But seventy-three is about.
And can you remind us how many are in each grade?
So, right, as, again, as of beginning of September, we had four in the sixth grade, 11 in the seventh grade, four in the eighth grade, 18 in the ninth grade, 15 in the 10th grade, 13 in the 11th grade, and eight in the 12th grade.
So, potential, are you thinking that the, so, eight will graduate? So that leaves potentially eight slots divided amongst all of these? Assuming every child were to stay?
No, I would think we would look for, you know, especially for the ninth grade, to, again, use a target number of around 20. It'll depend on what the class enrollments look like for next year, but.
Do we know the class size for ninth grade? Is it a smaller class?
The upcoming ninth grade.
It always depends on who's moving, yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
It depends on exactly what Michelle was gonna say. Who's moving from eighth into ninth? Um, let me look real quick. We had, my numbers, where are they?
I feel like it was the 130-ish, 130.
I wasn't sure if eighth grade is a smaller class or not.
No, it's the seventh grade that was really small.
Okay.
Middle school, 135 in the eighth grade right now, so. And, you know, with, with choice, we had 136 in the ninth grade this year, so.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's roughly.
Are we trying to keep it around 135 each grade?
Yeah, I mean, the, the principle that we have is, we look at, you know, the required courses, so, science is the one that actually has a more of a physical cap on how many students can sit in the room. And we say how many sections, you know, would we want to offer? And how many choice students can we have without pushing the average class size, you know, way up into the twenties and still, you know, enroll choice students? So, you know, so 18 would roughly be about two a section. I think usually the number's around nine classes for a subject.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And, so we're voting on that later today?
That's correct.
And so when would, assuming that we vote in affirmative, when would someone be able to apply?
Have to check with, Brian's actually here. I would think we would have it up as soon as next week.
And would there be a deadline?
Um, choice deadline, when do we usually have the applications to, do you remember?
It might stay open for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we usually say, it usually stays open for at least a month.
So, the deadline would be February break, or it would be after February?
Probably March 1st, I would say.
Probably further than that. It's gonna be open for a month, it's starting this week. Friday, February 1st.
Yeah, so, Monday's, Monday's the 3rd. Right around there, beginning of March. Generally, what, what we end up doing is so that, because we have to, we do have a lottery, and that's how we decide who is entered into the lottery, based on who applies by that certain date. If you come to us after that date, we're not turning people away, we're just dropping you to the bottom of the lottery list. So, so technically, it really doesn't close.
And the lottery only applies really to non-siblings, correct?
Correct.
So if you have a lot of kids, get the first one in.
Right.
Because then the next ones are right on the list.
Do we know how many siblings right now, or not yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's a chain migration, right?
Well, it's.
You went in, the rest follow.
Well, it's a lot easier to have all your kids in one school.
Yeah, no, I'm kidding.
Yeah, it makes sense not to split families up.
Can we sign warrants during the hearing?
I would.
Do they close the, close the hearing?
They should close the hearing if we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Does it have to, is there a law that says it has to be a half hour?
It was advertised to be at, to start at 6:30, and the school committee meeting was advertised to start at 7 o'clock, so.
Oh, so it's advertised or posted to start at 7?
Posted.
Posted to start at 7?
It should be posted for 7, as the regular meeting.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Is it?
Nothing specific.
Actually, it just says 6:30.
Is this the actual agenda that was posted?
I believe it would be, yes.
So there's nothing here about the time?
Yeah, we should be able to move on then.
Line by me.
All right, I got 6:42 on my clock. We'll leave the meeting open until 6:45, just in case someone shows up and then.
Okay.
Call it, get rolling there. Close the public hearing on school choice. And now, we can just open up.
Call the regular meeting.
That requires a vote.
Requires a vote to close the hearing?
We voted the last time to close a hearing through a vote. When we had the budget hearing.
All right, at 6, I have 6:45. Someone move to.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee close the choice, school choice hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? We have six. All right, now, at 6:46, I am opening the regular January 30th school committee meeting. And now we will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to approve the warrant, so we'll shut down for.
And we're back. All right, at this point, I'm just gonna open the floor to any citizens' comments or anyone else that wants to say anything while we're here. Okay, moving on.
Whoops, somebody just, no, she doesn't wanna speak, she's not.
Oh, well, this is all the wellness stuff.
All right. The chair report, I actually don't have anything prepared today. I thought I was going to, but no, nothing came to mind. So superintendent's report.
All right, two brief items. So first off, we conducted our first set of ALICE drills at Miles River Middle School and Hamilton Wyndham Regional High School today. This was with the faculty on those ALICE protocols, and they were taught techniques focusing on enhanced lockdowns, building evacuation and countering. And we wanted to make sure we recognized the members of the Hamilton and Wyndham Police and Fire Departments who assisted in these drills. I want to say we probably had seven, eight members from, from the four departments that were in attendance. And middle and high school faculty will also conduct drills on February 27th. And then, the other announcement is just a reminder for the committee that we're gonna hold our second joint meeting with the Hamilton and Wyndham Finance Committees on Tuesday, February 5th, at 7 o'clock, right here in the multi-room of the Big Brother School.
I had that in my calendar for Friday. And I'm like, there's no way we scheduled this, it's a Friday.
It's not Friday, next Tuesday.
And it's at 7?
7 o'clock.
All right, I'll be a little late.
Good, 'cause I was gonna blow it off to go to the BU games.
On Friday?
Yeah.
All right, and that's what I have.
All right, so now.
But we don't have a meeting on the 6th.
We do not.
We don't meet then again until the 13th, and that's when we'll have the public hearing.
Correct.
Consent agenda. Do we want anything pulled out of the minutes? Why don't we go right ahead?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve the consent agenda as is, with minutes from December 24th, 2018.
24th or just 4?
I'm sorry, December 4th, 2018, thank you. December 5th, 2018, December 19th, 2018, January 2nd, 2019, and January 16th, 2019. There can be no changes.
Second.
All those in favor? Six. All right, now, Brian, I'll say, are we gonna hold off?
Um, as I said, Brian said, do you wanna go now, Brian? Would you like us to hold off a little bit? Okay, I think he's ready. We're just, we're just running ahead of schedule tonight, so.
All set?
Go ahead.
All right, so thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to talk about a topic I think that is going on, or very important at a lot of schools in the area, vaping. What is gonna be our response to it?
Just get the microphone closer.
Oh, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Okay, so, again, I'm here to talk about what our response to vaping will be, because again, it's a challenge that we are facing increasingly over the past couple of years. So it's time for us to consider as a community what we're gonna do to help out our students. All right, maybe I should start first by talking about the device itself, because there are a diversity of things that we found in school that kids are using. I can show you what the most common one is in a little bit. But what a vape is, is it's a device that produces an aerosol. It heats up a liquid, it typically contains nicotine and maybe some other flavors, and people can inhale that and then feel the effects of the nicotine or whatever else is in, in the liquid. They have some other names that they're known by, but a vape currently is the most common name that is used out there. The use of the device is called vaping, and that's what we're most frequently talking about. The, one concern that I have, that I've been doing some more reading on though, is that vapes can be used to deliver more than just nicotine. They can be used to deliver marijuana, and this is something we need to be mindful of, I think, as the state law has changed in Massachusetts, and the availability of marijuana, I think, has just increased. And although it's available to people who are 21 and older, certainly, students with siblings may have access to this, so it's something that we do need to think about a little bit. The most common vape that we see is this particular brand called the Juul. It's pretty small, it fits in the palm of your hand, maybe the size of a pen, a little bit bigger. And, again, like I said, this is the most common one that I find in the school. I really don't find much else. The small size of it, I think, is, is one of the biggest problems, in that a student can hold it in his or her hand, fit it in a pocket, put it in a sock, and nobody's gonna know the difference. In fact, it's small enough and slim enough that a kid could actually do this during class time, and nobody would really notice. And that has happened from time to time. And certainly, when students are able to go to the bathroom, and we're not gonna be following them in there every second, so that's another opportunity for this to take place. So like I said, the small size of it really causes a lot of problems. Now, the pods are the small rectangle things there that you see with the colored tops on them, and that's where the nicotine liquid actually is. There is flavoring in there, and that's thought to be some of the marketing that this company has done to appeal to younger users. One concern that has come up recently, and is related to what I just said about marijuana, is that you can tamper with these pods and get other substances inside of them. If you watch YouTube, you can kinda learn how to do anything nowadays, and I did find out there plenty of information about how that kinda stuff can be done. Again, this is the most common brand that we find. There are other ones. It's not uncommon for custodians to find these empty pods in bathrooms at the end of the day. Usually, if I have to search a student and I find something, it's almost always one of these empty pods or a package of pods. A lot of times, the Juul, the device itself, is hidden because that does cost a little bit more, and that's the thing that they wanna hold on to. These, the small pods too, are concerning, because I think there's a little bit of business going on with them as well, students selling them in school, because it is pretty easy just to pass these things around, because they're small size. Here's some statistics that I found on vaping. As you can see on the left-hand side, nationally, use is on the rise amongst high school students and kids in high schools who have tried these are much more likely to turn to cigarettes. Now, locally, though, in our own school, I think we're mirroring really what's gone on nationally, although the use at our school does look higher. Not really sure what the discrepancy is there though, but there have been a couple of surveys done over the past few years. You can see that almost a quarter to almost a half of our students have admitted to trying this at least once. At the same time, the number of times that we've found kids in school either in possession of or actually vaping over the past three years, you can see that it's doubling just about every year. And a lot of times, I like to use maybe the rule of 10, every time you. Every time you catch a kid doing something, it's probably happening at least 10 times more often. So, you know, I'm not really sure that it stretches that far, but certainly we're seeing a rise in the use during school or bringing these products into the school as well. Why do we care about this? Well, I think if you look at it from a couple of different ways. First of all, from a health perspective, nicotine is very addictive, and with that, it can affect adolescent brain development, because brain rewiring is so busy at that particular time, certainly any chemical interaction that's introduced from the environment is gonna have an effect. The aerosol itself, they know that it contains some cancer-causing chemicals and some tiny particles that can be brought into the lungs. You know, what the effect of that is so far, I don't think there's enough research on that, but it's something to be concerned about. The acute nicotine exposure itself also is worrisome, because one of those little pods actually has an equivalent amount of nicotine as a full pack of cigarettes. So a kid who grabs this, doesn't know what the heck they're doing, and just starts using it excessively, could be really taking in a lot of nicotine without their knowing it, and what the effects of that are on that young person, you know, it's really unknown, but it could be bad. And like I said, vapes can function as marijuana delivery devices. Some are manufactured specifically for that purpose. I think some can be repurposed to do that, and like I said, given the fact that we now have legalized marijuana in Massachusetts, we need to think about that. From an education standpoint, students are using and distributing vapes in school, so if that's happening, that's time away from learning, and we need to be mindful of that. There are withdrawal effects of using this type of product, because they get such a high dose of nicotine, then they step away from it. Some of the things we've seen are some irritability, anxiety, the need to leave class a lot to go do this. And then with students vaping in the bathrooms, like I already said, it's time away from learning. There's not a whole lot of teaching that goes on in the bathroom, thankfully. But a real concern that I have is that other students are starting to avoid using the restroom simply because this kinda behavior is going on in there. So a student who wants to access the space for legitimate reasons is afraid to do so, because there could be, you know, a couple of kids in there doing something that's not supposed to be going on in school, and they're uncomfortable with that, and they should be. Our current response, and you have to look no further than our student handbook to figure out what it is that we could be doing. Our student handbook does draw a distinction between possession and use. Right now, possession could entail a penalty of detention, certainly we're gonna contact the parents. It does talk about a possible suspension, maybe cases where there have been multiple infractions, and the MIAA penalty is enforced because it is a chemical health violation. The student handbook does state that students who are caught smoking on campus, and I guess I'll use vaping as a synonym for that, are subject to an out-of-school suspension, and also with that, the MIAA penalty for chemical health would be enforced. So that's our handbook, that's what we could do. I think the handbook often puts an upper limit on what can happen, but a lot of times, we have to be responsive to the needs of individual students and also the reality of what we see going on in school. So for the time being, I've not drawn a distinction myself between possession or use, simply because if you have it on you, really think it's probably because you are using it, or it's being passed to other students and they're using it. Our response to it so far has been to keep kids after school in detention. In cases where kids have had multiple infractions, like I said, we have used suspension, but we've used in-school suspension. We don't want kids out of school, we want them coming to school, so at least if they can be in the building, they have access to their teachers. We can work with them throughout the school day. We have the student engage in a discussion with our school nurse, so that way she can provide some of the health information that kids need. They're moving towards adulthood, they need this information so that they can make their own responsible decisions. And finally, the MIAA penalty is enforced, just because it's part of the chemical health policy of our athletic department. But I think that as I look at the rise of the prevalence of the use of this nationally, locally, and especially in our school, we need a more comprehensive response to this, that there does need to be a disciplinary component to it that can act as a deterrent. I think that's very important. It gets kids to stop, think about some of their choices, but I also think that addressing the health and the learning concerns is equally as important. So we've thought pretty carefully about this over a period of time. I think my own thinking started just because it kept happening in school and we were dealing with it, but we were dealing with it with a policy that, you know, was from a long time ago, before this kinda stuff existed, before we knew anything about the harmful effects of vaping. And the community's response to it, I think, parents have been talking about it quite a bit outside of school, because they've heard about it. They've seen it in their own house, their own children are talking to them about it. So I think that there's definitely a lot of energy in the community at large to see us have a much more comprehensive response. And I wanna thank people who are in attendance tonight. We have members of the Board of Health for both Hamilton and Wyndham here. We have members of the schools or the district's Wellness Committee here. Mr. Tracy's here tonight. We've got parents, educators, community members, so I think this is a strong showing, and that illustrates the fact that it's something that the two towns need to come together and figure out. And so, as a group, we considered several layers of response for this, and here they are. The first thing that we want to really codify is that there's not gonna be a distinction between possession or use. If this is found on you in school or you're using it in school, we're really gonna consider that the same thing. Another component of this will be education. Student who is involved in this, we would have them enroll in a nicotine cessation program. I think dealing with that student individually, so that they can reflect upon their decisions, see what the information is out there, give them tools to make better choices in the future is gonna be very important, but also attacking this more globally and enhancing our high school health curriculum will be very important to focus on this. Yeah, they talk about it in health class, but as more information comes out, it will allow us to further develop our high school health curriculum. From a disciplinary standpoint, I would continue the practice of keeping kids after school, and that certainly can be a time where they engage in a nicotine cessation program and access the resources that we can provide them. There are times, though, where with multiple offenses, there may need to be a higher level of discipline, and this is where in-school suspension would still remain an option, but a last resort, again, as I said, for multiple offenses of the tobacco policy. A fine system, that would be a new part of this. There are a number of schools in our area that through Boards of Health or town bylaws have allowed school officials to levy a fine to students who are found in possession or found using this on school property or at school-sponsored events. This is something that we are proposing, because we feel that, you know, students are moving towards adulthood, and sometimes when you make bad decisions and do things you're not supposed to do, you're gonna face these kinds of penalties. Also, I heard from student government, Will Glofski is actually here tonight, and he attends some of the regional student government meetings, and their discussion, what came out of that was that the best deterrent for this kind of behavior was a fine, because I think it gets kids to think that, ooh, I may have to pay that, my parents may have to pay that, and undoubtedly, my parents are not gonna be happy if I have to pay for it or they have to pay for it. And I just think it's a nice, measured step towards adulthood if you make some bad decisions. Extracurricular sanctions, we're gonna consider going beyond the MIAA minimum penalty, which is currently what we follow. And we're gonna propose increasing that penalty, accelerating it. Right now, I believe the first offense would be 25% of the season. You know, we're thinking about extending that to half the season and then just 100% of the season for a second offense and everything thereafter. We have the discretion to do that at the school level, but the important thing to note is that this will include not only athletics, but also clubs and activities and extracurricular events. So this, it's gonna be a little bit further-reaching than it currently is right now, because students who are involved in sports are not the only ones who are engaged in this kinda behavior. And I wanna make sure that, you know, I'm clear about the fact that this, you know, wasn't something that I just came up with or Mr. Tracy came up with. Having this, I think, multifaceted approach to the issue that we're facing, it was important that it came out of a community, and it did, from the Wellness Committee. You know, we heard input from students, from parents, from educators, and we're looking at it from a lot of different directions. So I think this is a much more comprehensive and responsive approach to dealing with the vaping epidemic that's going on in our school. How does a fine work? Because I think that's really the biggest shift. The other things that I was talking about, the disciplinary response, the extracurricular issue, those are things that we can handle at the school level through the school council, student handbooks. The ability to fine for certain behaviors is really beyond, you know, our authority. So where do we get that from? The Massachusetts Smoke-Free Workplace Law, the Ed Reform Act, both give towns or Boards of Health the ability to levy fines for smoking in public places. Local schools with fines for possession right near us, Beverly, Danvers, Manchester, Masscanomet, and Triton, all have done so through a couple of different mechanisms. I think Beverly, Manchester, Masscanomet, and Triton all have done so through town bylaw, whereas Danvers has used a Board of Health regulation. And in either case, the bylaw or the Board of Health regulation has designated school officials as the enforcers of the no-smoking policy, and they delineate the amount of the fine. Sometimes the fine stays at $100, sometimes it escalates. There is a ceiling of $300 on the fines, because once you get beyond $300, you're moving beyond the non-criminal disposition. The money from, or student government, like I said before, reports that the fines are an important deterrent, which is one reason why we really wanna include this. Money from the fines, according to state law, must be used for cessation programs or curriculum enhancements around this particular issue. So where we're at with the enactment of the fines, you know, this is a Board of Health issue, really, if you read the state law, but they can recommend a couple of different ways to go. Right now, instead of a bylaw, the Boards of Health are recommending that they do this through regulation, through their own particular governing body. And in that particular regulation, they would like to include language of a definition of tobacco products. That's very important, to expand it just beyond what's currently out there, but to include e-cigarettes and vapes and any component thereof, to make no distinction between possession or use, in other words, to state that the possession or use of these products is prohibited on school grounds or school-sponsored activities. They would delineate the amount of the fines. We would be designated as school officials, as enforcers of this particular regulation or bylaw, if it comes out eventually on school property, and there would be notification to parents, obviously, if students were caught in possession or using on campus. So that's really my presentation tonight. I'm sure that you have plenty of questions, but like I said, I'm really proud of the fact that this came largely from the community, from parents asking us a lot of questions, to kids coming to us concerned about it. Teachers, obviously, are, it's on their minds as well, and Mr. Tracy and I deal with it on at least a weekly basis. So it's coming from all different directions, and it's time for us, I believe, to step up and offer a more comprehensive system of support to our students.
May I ask, three quick questions?
Yeah.
The MIAA penalties, you had mentioned 25% of the season. Is that across all sports, or what if a student is in multiple sports?
So it would be, the current policy is, I believe, if a student is in violation of the chemical health policy, they would miss 25% of the remaining contests in the sport that they're playing or the next sport that they will play.
I see.
That's for a first violation.
Right, for the first.
And that goes up.
Then it escalates.
Yes, and after that, it goes 50, or 60%, excuse me, then 100%.
Peter, people can't hear you.
Would that, how would that affect? Oh, I'm sorry. I had, I had backdoored you.
I know, thank you.
I didn't see, what about this, it says possession or use. What about the sale of? Would that be, would that be an increased fine, maybe, if someone was caught distributing?
That would be difficult to know how to tell if kids were selling it. I mean, other than them saying that's what happened, or we got real lucky and saw it happening, which I would rather not, but...
Sometimes quantity...
I think the possession or use is a good place to start, although I'm pretty confident that, you know, some of that business is being transacted in school as well.
And do you expect a lot of pushback? If a student's gonna miss sports, is that gonna affect scholarships or things like that? How do you think the parents would, would the parents accept this?
That's a, that's a great question. I think that if parents know ahead of time and are able to have this conversation with their children, and there's a really clear understanding about what's on the line when you make decisions, that, you know, they might push back a little bit. But I, they, you know, certainly have the opportunity before a season starts, before school starts, to sit down and say, hey, look, this is what, these are the expectations. If you're gonna sign up for a sport, they're very clear about it, and everybody needs to adhere to it.
Craig covers that as President.
Right.
The A.D., the A.D. has a meeting before the season with, the Athletic Director has a meeting prior to the start of each season with all of the students and their families, and that's one of those that he reviews with them about, you know, what those penalties are. The MIAA 25% is already in place now, so that's something that's already there. However, as Brian said, a district can choose to go farther in those penalties than the MIAA, and actually, once you do that, that then becomes the MIAA rule in your school. That's the way the MIAA looks at it and says, there's, you know, that's it.
Yeah, and in terms of educating students and parents about it, we plan to attend the next athletic meeting before the spring sports season and present some of our findings on the prevalence of this, you know, what the consequences are, both in terms of athletics and health and learning, to start the conversation now, because I think that there just, there needs to be a little bit more information pushed out into the community. And that's a, that's a great event to do it at, 'cause there's, there are so many kids who play sports, and at that mandatory night where all parents and athletes have to attend, you just, you have really a captive audience. So it's a good time to present that information.
Brian, what's the school's position or your recommendation around captaincies in athletics? So if you're, if you're found either in possession or use, I know a lot of schools have their own position around, not, you know, not only the MIAA rules, but a position around what happens to their current captaincy of a team and/or future captaincies.
I believe it's in our policy that a student can be removed when they're in violation. What's that?
I couldn't hear you.
Well, I believe that when they are found in violation of the chemical health policy, they are removed from their captaincy or during the next season are not eligible for that. And, you know, with athletics, at the end of the day, if the coach finds out about this and doesn't like it, they also have the discretion to say, you know what, you're just, you're not ready to be a captain right now. That also exists as well.
Thank you.
So does this extend to school events, like field trips, overnights?
Correct.
Other games?
Correct.
So then how does the, how can the Board of Health levy a fine if it's not on school property or...
They can't.
They can't, right?
Correct, so that would be the, if it was a school event on school property itself, if it was a dance, an athletic contest, or anything like that, the Board of Health obviously has authority there to act. Something off-campus, that would be something that we would need to consider. You know, would the fine be enforceable? You know, if they were in a town where that bylaw or there was an ordinance or a regular Board of Health regulation, could it be enforced through that mechanism? That's, that's something that I... That's a, that's something that I would need to call other schools and see how they handle that. But for right now, I'm thinking specifically of anything that occurs on any school property, any, any school-sponsored event, school property, or a school bus as well.
Yep, okay, agree.
And a quantity beyond personal possession would be a clear indicator that someone's distributing, if they had-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to tell sometimes. I mean, you buy up a little box of these pods, and they could be for personal use, they could be for passing out at school. You know, that's really hard to tell. You know, police struggle with that, you know, where to draw that line when they have to intervene for other matters. I'm not so sure I would wanna engage in that sort of thing, but, you know, certainly if it's on, if you have it, you have it, and-
Is there a standard of proof? Do you have to find it on the student, or can there be multiple reports of a student using it?
Well, if, what you're asking about is, you know, when do we know to go meet with a student to find out if they indeed have them, have that on them? You know, there's the, the standard of reasonable suspicion in schools when we can search students. But it, it, in, in a lot of cases, it'll happen where a teacher will walk into a bathroom and a kid is just using it right there. I think that the teacher's witness of that, you know, is sufficient to say it happened as well.
So, my first comment about the athletic mandatory meeting is it's not mandatory. So I would encourage you to make it mandatory that a student participate in one of these presentations before they're allowed to participate in a sport-
Yep.
-because it's not mandatory. And it's also not mandatory for the parents to come. You call it mandatory, but it's not mandatory. The next thing, I would, I would question why we want to have stricter regulations or stricter penalties than the MIAA if one of the best things we can do for helping a student to stop vaping is to develop a healthy lifestyle? And I think being part of a team is something that is a healthy lifestyle choice. So it seems to me that we're taking away something that could be part of their recovery process. I'd also like to really understand where the money's gonna go, how the money's gonna be handled. If it's a fine of the Board of Health, I believe that's gonna go to the town. I would like to understand what this cessation, nicotine cessation or whatever program is going to look like, who's going to pay, run it, and who's gonna pay for it.
So do you want me to start with the first question?
Me, of them.
Okay. So I think that question was about increasing the MIA penalty, why do that when we know that one of the best things for students is to be involved in a sport, and I agree wholeheartedly. I think that's why you have at the, you know, just sort of proposing something right now up here without having Craig here is, is difficult, but increasing it still allows the athlete to participate in practices. It just says you cannot play in the games, in the contests. So they're still a part of the family, they're just not allowed to play in the games. But students also need to understand the value of commitment, and part of that commitment is at the beginning of the season saying, I will not do these things. And they're moving towards adulthood, and I think it's time to put some structures and limits in place to, to help them move towards that. Second question was about-
How's the money?
How is the money going to be collected? Who's collecting it, and how is it gonna be used?
Okay. So the, the collection of the money, really what would happen would be at school, we would issue a ticket. Students would be paying a ticket as they would if it was a parking ticket or anything like that. The money actually would go to Town Hall. The Board of Health would be collecting that. Yes, it goes to the general fund of the town, I'm aware of that. You know, how the, the money gets moved past that is something that's, it's really beyond my, you know, my knowledge base right now. That's, you know, we're discussing that with the Board of Health, because they're trying to understand what they would do with that money as well.
And I'd like to understand what the nicotine cessation program will look like-
Yeah.
-who's gonna teach it, how's it gonna be paid for, what's going to encompass, when is it gonna be held?
The, the, the funding for this program, I mean, the, some of the fines are supposed to be used to help pay for this itself. You know, what exactly this program looks like? We're, we're looking at some products that are available out there right now. There doesn't seem to be a lot, and I think it, there's, there's a lag behind what, you know, what kids are engaged in and what some of these cessation programs could look like. You know, we have some experts in the community who do this kind of work themselves on a day-to-day basis. We would be looking to them. A lot of this is in development right now. The nice thing is, is it's the middle of the school year. We have until next school year to put a lot of these structures in place and give them shape. But we definitely do need to spend some time between now and the beginning of next school year, building a comprehensive cessation program that's accessible to the students who need it. Yeah? Yeah? Wanna come up here?
Mike.
Yeah, please come up, yes.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dizel Perez. I'm representing the Board of Health for Hamilton. I think some of the issues that you brought up are things that we sort of discussed during one of our meetings, and your question about why having a consequence being non-participation in school sports. And the idea is that if, if something's going to be reinforced, it has to be something that really is going to impact students, and students are going to want to participate in their sport. So if they know that that's a consequence, then that is going to effectively reduce behavior that's unwanted. And it, there is truth that participating in sports is sort of part of the wellness, but the other part is that there does have to be a consequence that's going to wanna dissuade certain behaviors. In terms of tobacco cessation programs, there's a lot of research out there in terms of how we can approach to support people who are addicted to nicotine. We do know that if you're looking at the literature, the use of vaping substances, e-cigs in particular, are on the rise in this population. A lot of it having to do with the fact that they don't understand the risks associated with it. So what we can do, and using a lot of the existing resources that we have, is really construct a educational system, and i, in the event that people are addicted, which we're finding is the case because these e-cigs are not FDA-regulated, then we can teach them skills to help kind of reduce the addictive properties that might accompany it. So there are, like, CBT approaches and other educational approaches that we know are effective and can inform an approach. I hope that helps.
Thank you, doctor.
It just seems like you're giving three penalties. You're giving a no-participation penalty, you're giving a fine penalty, and you're giving a detention penalty, and it seems like a lot of penalty. And it also seems not to make a distinction between use and possession.
Correct.
You know, you don't know if somebody has something, if they are actually using it, if they're holding it for a friend, if a friend slipped it into their backpack, if they found it on the way to school and picked it up. You don't know for sure that they're going to use it, and it seems to be making an awfully large leap there. So, and I do understand there has to be a penalty for there being possession, but you don't know that they're using it, whereas those who are using it, it's clear, so.
If you have them in your possession and you haven't turned them in, or you haven't done anything else with them, you haven't thrown them out, you intend to use them. If you didn't intend to use them, you wouldn't hold on to them long enough to get caught with them in your possession, and, and-
I'm just saying, there's, could've been your friend put it in your pocket, you could've said you would hold on to it for a friend, you could have, and whatever, I mean, whatever. I'm just saying, there's a big difference between having something and using something.
Well, it's still a tobacco product that's-
I agree.
It's not supposed to have it.
I agree, you should turn it in, but it's very difficult to be a teenager and try to navigate social relationships that are difficult.
Yeah, well, the bottom line is, the stuff does not belong at schools.
I totally agree.
It's clear in the state law, and if kids are bringing this into school, it is being shared or used, and that's not acceptable.
Brian, if you did enact, enact a fine structure, what would be your proposal for enforcing it on the back end? So, just because you fined someone, doesn't mean they're gonna pay it.
Correct.
So would they walk? Would they be able to go to the prom? I mean, what, what are the, what are the consequences?
So that's a really good question. There are a couple of avenues that you could pursue, and perhaps both. The first would be through the non-criminal disposition route, where the fine is levied. At the time that the fine is levied, you're supposed to inform the district court that this fine has been levied, and if the fine is not paid within a certain amount of days, you can then issue a complaint to the court, and they would be issued a summons. The same thing happens with marijuana citations or other violations of town ordinances. Parking tickets work in a similar manner. The backend of that, though, is that it makes its way to the registry, at which point they can suspend your license if you don't pay your parking tickets. You know, so you could certainly use the court lever, but we also have the extracurricular event avenue that you could go down as well, that if, you know, the fine is not paid, you can't participate in any extracurricular events until that, that is resolved.
That seems very difficult to enforce, 'cause you're not the finer. The finer and the fining authority comes to you only through the municipal Board of Health.
Correct.
So whether or not that is paid is really not any of your regulatory authority.
No, but I think a, a simple phone call to the Board of Health might-
I know, but you're not collecting the money. The money does not go to you. It's not money owed to you, it's money that's owed to the town.
It was, the way it would, the way it's worked in my experience is that the, the town clerk would then call Brian and say, so-and-so just paid their fine. Or, 'cause those tickets have a date on them, that after thirty days it expired, so-and-so has not paid the fine, and you wanna go for the next step.
But what I'm saying is-
That's what's happening. That's how it works in practice.
So I was more interested in what the school would do, not whether we would, you know, proceed with-
I know, but it's not a fine being issued by the school to the student, it's in, it's being issued by the town to the student. So just as we would not penalize a student for a parking ticket, why would we penalize them for another town ticket?
Well, because they still broke his school rules, so the school could have-
Yeah, right, but that-
Independent's own.
That fi, the fine has nothing to do with the penalty being levied by the school. That fine is levied by the town.
Based off a ticket given at school?
Correct.
So I don't understand why the confusion is. They can have two separate penalties, one through the school and one through the town.
I know, but if you don't pay the ticket, it's not, you're not not paying it to the school. It's not like you're not paying your lunch bill, you're not paying it to the town. So the person, I, you know, to me, it seems like the town is the one who should be issuing the penalty to the student for not paying the ticket.
But the town would want the penalty to make a difference, so it's gonna be a school thing. That, that want the penalty to make a difference, that want the, the whatever that is, the whatever that, that regulation of, of penalty is to actually be impactful to the student. So anything you do is gonna be school-related in terms of penalties for, you know, non-payment of fine. It's all gonna be school-related, so-
It's not a fine of the school.
No, but if you don't pay it, it's the, the penal, the penalty you impose is going to be school-related because that's what teenagers care about.
So, I'm Andrew Tang, I'm the Chair of the Board of Health for Wenham. And as Mr. Menegonya mentioned, the, both boards had met together for a joint board meeting a couple of weeks ago to discuss this in terms of what is the best process and to help with the issue of vaping specifically, but tobacco, nicotine in the school system. And so, you're right that the, the state allows the Boards of Health to set regulation regarding the use of tobacco, and now redefined recently when the, increased the minimum age for the sale of tobacco products, made a, a larger definition of nicotine and nicotine products, including vaping. As the Board can set the school superintendent and its designees as the enforcers of the law, and we are actually working with Town Council, specifically in Hamilton, about the ability of the committee to actually have policy to set monetary fines for this, and therefore the school committee itself would be the agent in which would fine and collect, based on the Boards of Health giving you that power. So it is again a work in progress. We're meeting again to go over some draft language, and hopefully soon in the next, we hope in the next couple of months, actually come up with draft regulation that will, you know, present at each Board's in public comment, and, and if those pass, then we will make sure, and that's the, and again, you're right, there's, there's some, some area, gray areas that are not well-defined, and so that's why we're getting some help to, to find that better, so that you don't have that question of who, if I give you a fine, then I have no power after that to do anything else that, that, that doesn't hold anything. So we wanna make sure that we close that loop, as well as the collection, in terms of, does it always have to go into the general ledger, or can we, we set the school committee as its own designee for this, for this endeavor? So we will get more, but that is our goal, and we are, emails have been flying back and forth. So it's very active, and as you can see from the folks here, we're working hard.
How does it work in the other towns where fines are enforced?
There are towns.
Masco's not a town.
Triton as well.
Triton isn't a town. Triton's a regional.
Most of the towns or schools that I researched who have a fine system have done so through town bylaw. Danvers is the exception. They seem to be the one that did so through a Board of Health regulation.
For example, so when Triton did it, as Triton being a regional district-
Yep.
-they have passed bylaws in their towns to allow for the, for this in their high school as a, and I'm sure they've worked out a lot of these details.
Yeah, it was specifically the town of Newbury that, because that's where, that's where Triton physically sits in Newbury.
Okay. So I'm sure they've worked out a lot of these details and a lot of these questions-
They started this twenty, eighteen years ago, so yes, they, they have worked out a lot of these same issues.
So I'm sure that, you know, that the way Triton has done this, you know, would answer a lot of our questions.
So it would be good to get, you know, especially if we're gonna be the fining authority and we're gonna be setting the fines, it would be good to get that kind of information. 'Cause my understanding is Danvers does not issue fines, according to their handbook. Even though they may have the authority, they don't do it.
Excuse me, what'd you say?
Even though they may have the authority, they don't do it in Danvers.
Well, that's, that's, they have the discretion to do so or not do so, like, you know, I can't-
It's not in their student handbook, and their principal doesn't issue fines.
I don't know about that.
Their handbook actually says they've been sworn as enforcement officers.
I just looked at it, it's not what it said.
You have it?
So it's suspension and expulsion, three day, one day, one day.
I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, owing to what we know is an ongoing and increasing problem, especially in a town where a lot of the kids have after-school jobs and, you know, an allowance and have a mon, have money coming in, you know, in a town that is as well-off as we are. We, I appreciate all the work you've done, you've done to push this into regulations for the upcoming year.
Well, I appreciate that, but really, it's the, the work of the community at large. I think the parents, the students have spoken about this, and they definitely want more done to help curb it, but ultimately make sure that kids are more educated and have, I think, a better toolkit to deal with some of the decisions that they're faced with on a day-to-day basis.
I have a question. I was just wondering if there'll be a difference between the consequences between vaping nicotine and marijuana?
Um, that's a great question. Part of the deal with marijuana or other drugs, I guess we'll call them, is that they're covered by a, a state law by itself, that if you are found in possession or using those substances on campus, it's, it's pretty clearly laid out. it's, it's pretty clearly laid out what can happen and, you know, that can go all the way up to expulsion from school. So there, there are a number of other disciplinary levers that are involved with those kinds of things. But certainly we would want to make sure we merge the two things so that they're not entirely different. You know, you'd want to have an educational component for it as well. You would also want to include the changed MIA penalty as part of that as well.
So what is the penalty for smoking marijuana on school grounds right now?
Right now?
Yeah.
It could go all the way up to expulsion from school. That's, that's the upper limit of it.
And vaping is not that.
Vaping is not that, no.
Great. Any other questions?
So my quest, so this, the ne- what is the next step here?
That's a, that's a great question. I think the next step is for us internally as a school and with the wellness committee is to take some feedback, maybe from the committee, from Dr. Harvey or other members of the community to try to fill out, I think, some of the, the different components of our response, such as the nicotine cessation education component, also the MIA penalty increase. We would want to work with Craig Genualdo around that. So I think there's some very specific tasks that need to be done. In terms of the, the fine component, that's really in the hands of the Boards of Health right now because the, the language needs to be further solidified. You know, what the level of involvement of the school committee in this as well may change. So I, I think that because, again, we, we still have a number of months before the school year closes. There's a lot of work, but there, there's the time to get it done and in place for next school year. And there's also, I mean, the good thing about this is that there's time for some student voice in this. I think student government obviously is gonna hear about this now, so you have a topic of conversation. And you guys certainly are gonna want to speak up and help us figure out how we can get this going.
So I did not hear school council in that, which is the group that actually approves the discipline in the student handbook. So when would you?
Well, I mentioned that earlier, where a lot of these provisions are just general student handbook language changes. And, you know, that work starts late winter. It continues through the end of the year because this isn't the only thing that we're gonna have to deal with in the student handbook. There's some other language that needs to be cleaned up. And that's, that's the body that needs to ultimately approve that. So it, it does take a little bit of, of time, just because there are other things that we need to consider.
And could you tell us who's on the, the school council? Because when I've inquired about it with the public, nobody really seems to know.
Mr. Tracy, could you help with the school council?
Especially if parents want to weigh in, like who can they contact, kind of thing?
So we have several members of the community and teaching staff and student body who are on the school council. There are currently three students that are on the council. There are two of our teachers, Ms. Borak and Ms. Pernice are on the school council. Mrs. Verge is a, a member of the parent segment of the school council. We also have a, a community member who had students in the, in the school system. Grace, I'm slipping on her last-
Belfiori?
Belfiori, thank you. She is our community rep. Her kids have all graduated, but she's been, she stayed along at the school council. So those are our, our consistent members that, that come to the meetings.
So it sounds like you have room for more parents on the committee? Are you, are you currently seeking?
I am not.
Okay.
I usually do it at the beginning of the school year.
So those went unfilled this year, is that?
No, they're filled. They're just not consistent members coming.
Oh, so people are on the committee, but they're not attending?
They're not, they're not attending consistently.
And who are those people?
I'd rather not say right now.
Okay. Could you email me a list of the people who are on the school council? Thank you. Could you send me the most recent minutes of the school council meeting?
Yeah, they're posted, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything you're looking from the school committee for, like, tonight that we can do or?
I think any, just any feedback that you have so far about what we've proposed would be helpful. You know, the, I think the board, the Boards of Health have to drive that, that fine part because it, it is new. So they, you know, will finalize some language around the regulations. You know, until we have that in hand, you're working with not all the information maybe that you want to have, but any feedback based on what we've been able to present you so far would be very helpful.
May I ask one more question? That, that fifty percent number who have tried it shocked me a little bit. How many people, how many students continue to use it? Or how many people have just made that mistake and tried once?
That's a, I, I really don't have an answer to that question. I mean, are there kids who have been caught multiple times in school? Yes, but it's, I, you know, I couldn't speak to anything more than that.
Just a shockingly high number that so many students-
It's very available and very portable and easy to hide. So that's, you know, that's the thing that we're facing.
So are the eleven disciplinary, whatever number that you gave us, are those unique individuals or are those total disciplinary actions?
I don't know that I could say that and maintain some confidentiality. I can just say that there have been eleven cases this year involving this.
Okay. I, I mean, because if it's one kid who got caught eleven times, it seems like a lot of effort for that. But if it's a lot, if it's more case, if it's more than that, then it-
It's not one student. I can tell you that. That's as much as I can say.
Well, I mean, I, I think this is obviously a really important issue. You know, the, the numbers that you've shown throughout your presentation really just dictate that and really dictate the, dictate the need within our, you know, school specifically and within our community. And, you know, just, I, I do appreciate the work all of you are doing and, you know, the, the student body and the, the parents as well. You know, a, a, and I think that sort of coming up out of here is, is, you know, definitely need, the need for an education process that, you know, these students need to realize that, you know, when we were growing up, it was, it was just smoking, right? And it had a particular smell and, and stigma to it and whatnot, and you still had that. That, you know, the, the stigma seems to have, have gone away a little bit. And we, it needs to, the seriousness of which needs to bring back-
The smell went away. Now it smells good.
So, you know, but like the, the seriousness of which needs to be brought back, you know? And then, you know, having these serious consequences is one way of definitely, you know, going through that. I, I think that sort of the line of questioning that was coming from this side of the table, I think probably gives you a little bit of direction on what you'd want to iron out in, in dealing with, with a rollout process or as you move forward. You know, for, for me, something like this is a no-brainer and I sort of leave it to the experts to try and figure out. You know, and you have my sort of silent support. But, you know, I know, I know others sort of like to get into the weeds a lot more than I do and, and have definitely brought up some valid points, again, from this side of the table on just things that we, we want to make sure that we're, we have the answers for at, at some point down, down the line when inevitably we get pushed back by, you know, some, somebody who got caught and their parents aren't happy about it, about the consequences. So, because we do know the community that, you know, we serve. And, you know, other than that, I don't know if anyone has anything else they'd like to-
Can it, can it be detected by dogs, like other drugs?
No.
Is this something that?
The nicotine, no. And that's one of the questions that we, we were actually discussing that the other day. With some of these new forms of, you know, for marijuana, for example, we don't know.
It just looks weird.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, could, could a dog hit on a, you know, a vape cartridge that's, you know, cannabis? We don't know. I, I think the, the jury's out at this point.
Plus you wouldn't want it to, that's an operational security thing. You wouldn't want it, let it get out anyway. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
It's all in the world.
You want to tell kids that dogs can detect it, even if they can't?
Thank you very much, guys, everybody for coming, coming out. I just turned Canadian for a second.
And Will, you are brilliant as Cinderella's prince. Absolutely brilliant. The whole cast. I'm always blown away by the, by the troupe, the cast over there. All right. You're quite the cad, though.
Next up on the agenda is the FY twenty-
Choice next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I- I just crossed some things out. We don't usually do that, do we? So we're gonna do our annual vote for school choice for FY twenty. Peter, I'm just not sure if you're aware that like as part of the state regulation, right?
You have to do it every year by June.
Every, every year we have to vote tech, like that we're, whether or not to allow our district to allow-
Okay, by June.
So it's like, it, it happens every year. And it's just, you know, a formality. Well, I guess it could go either way.
We stopped at some years, didn't we? Didn't we stop at three thousand?
Not in the last, not in the last seven.
Not in the last seven?
No.
But, you know-
We've always participated in school choice.
We bring in fewer students, but we didn't stop.
It benefits us because those sending districts pay us and we can make up-
It's five thousand dollars per student is the, the rate that the state has, states that twenty years ago.
Three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for eight, like seventy-three students.
And we, we stay with, we stay with it and the limits of not increasing-
The class size.
No, increasing, having to add teachers at, of a higher cost.
Right. And that's what I was referring to earlier. The idea is, you know, we want to maximize the, you know, number of students in a class, but not actually add so many choice students that we're, that we're actually adding classes because that doesn't, that doesn't pay.
What we found several years ago is, was the, was the shift in policy. So we went, we went in a new direction, but we've never stopped it.
Right. So the policy actually is that we, we would not add more students, so many students that would actually require adding additional sections.
Right. So the analogy we use is seats on a bus. So the bus has to take the trip. If it has empty seats, it doesn't cost you any extra money. So we might as well get, fill the seats and get the five thousand, right? So long as we don't-
Don't add a bus.
So long as we don't have to add a bus.
Yeah, just wanted to sort of catch you up because I know sometimes when we talk about that there's going to be the vote. Everyone's like panicking, like, oh, it's going away or it's, well, it's-
You have to do it annually.
Yeah, it has to happen.
I mean, the, the state, the requirement, it has to be done by June first. And then we have to report to the state if we are, if we're not participating in the, in the choice program. But again, as, as I said earlier, my recommendation is to continue for grades six through twelve.
And parents are responsible to get their kids here or do we send?
Yes. There's no, there's no transportation provided in school choice.
You ready for a motion?
If you pick up the train and do-
I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee vote to accept school choice for fiscal year twenty for grades six through twelve.
Second?
All those in favor?
I feel I should ask for discussion. What if there was discussion?
I apologize. I tend to jump the gun. Also not elementary. You're all right, though, because I, I do like, I think it's a valuable program and I, I should have been like-
Yeah, we don't do elementary.
Would we ever, so I know, we, could we ever, would we ever consider adding elementary? I know that I believe Manchester has added Starian kindergarten.
You would need to have a need.
Manchester participates, yes, they participate in grades in the elementary, K to six or five, whatever their elementary schools are. They very rarely accept students because their class sizes, you know, if you looked at our class size report, we're really not gonna want to push those classes up into twenty-four.
No, we don't. I just, I'm just curious what your thoughts were on that. Thank you.
Those classes, because you're, they're so finite where there's two gra- two classes per grade, per building, basically. You know, we try our best to balance them that it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
What if we had a different building structure, maybe?
Something drastic would have to happen for that to open up.
That or single payer healthcare.
Yeah. The long-term strategy.
Long-term strategy.
All right. Now, excuse me. Moving into FY twenty budget review, the operating budget-
Harvey?
So tonight, the committee wanted a workshop, so David and Gina are gonna lead a workshop discussion. And there's some slides, three or four slides into the presentation. But what Mike and I thought we'd do is just kind of recap where we are. We've been at this for the better part of six weeks. We made a recommendation to the committee on December nineteenth. That recommendation hasn't changed. We presented a lot of material between then and now and answered a lot of questions, written questions, which you'll find the responses to in your packet. And they were provided on Friday through Dropbox. So the, the process, again, it starts in October, runs internally through November through this first half of December, where we make a recommendation to the school committee. January, we spend the better part of that going over the details. Tonight, we're gonna have a workshop and have some discussion. At the next meeting, at the next school committee meeting, the committee is obligated to vote on the adoption of a budget, whether it's the recommended budget or not. So what I, what I want to press on at this time is, is if the committee's going to suggest changes, ideally, the night is tonight for those changes to be, to be suggested and kind of loosely adopted so that we can prepare the materials for the next meeting by next Friday. Once we get past the thirteenth, we'll, the budget will be certified by the district treasurer and will be brought before town meeting, or both town meetings in early April. So real quick, superintendent's recommendation is a combination of three factors. Level service plus the OPEB trust fund, which I discussed at length on January seventh, second in my presentation. And then that same evening, we talked about school resource officer. And we had both chiefs come before the committee that same evening. So what do we mean by level service? It's a, level service is a continuation of the current services, activities and programs of the district. There's nothing new other than trust fund and, OPEB trust fund and school resource officer. So, so what does that translate into in terms of gross operating expense increases? It's just shy of two million dollars or a six-point-two percent increase versus the current year or FY nineteen budget. You're familiar with this schedule, so it kind of simplifies our operating budget into the major cost categories, starting with the largest at the top, salaries, which represents roughly two-thirds of our budget or twenty, almost twenty-two million dollars. So those items that I've circled, those four, which consist of salaries, all salaries, out-of-district tuition costs with, which Stacy Busek spoke at length on earlier in the process, OPEB trust fund and school resource officer, those four categories represent one-point-nine million or almost ninety percent of the total year-to-year, budget-to-budget increase. So here's our, our, you know, our financial statement, our net assessment, financial statement. It shows at the top our general operating expenses after offsets increasing by just shy of six-point-two percent. Our, and our net assessment increasing by five-point-one percent. Four-point-one percent to Hamilton and six-point-nine percent for Wenham. So that's a recap of what we've talked about since the middle of December. At this point, I'll hand the discussion over and I'll play John Madden. Color commentary here to kind of assist in the conversation.
Tony Romo, baby. Get with the times. It's all about Romo.
I prefer John Madden. But we, Mike and I have put together a few slides to, to assist in the conversation.
All right, so, you know, we, we were definitely asked and it was brought up that the committee was really looking for a workshop to be done. And, you know, as I put it out in previous weeks, sort of, you know, what we had for questions and what everyone was looking for when saying that they actually wanted a workshop. sort of, you know, what we had for questions and what everyone was looking for when saying that they actually wanted a workshop. And as we took it into our planning meeting for this, tonight's workshop, excuse me, you know, in discussing with Gene, Dr. Harvey, and Jeff, I, I was probably looking for something a little more vague, but again, that, that's me, and that's sort of how I operate anyway. And, you know, what, what really came out of that was, you know, sort of what the, the list in some recommendations, or not recommendations, I apologize. I knew I was gonna do that, too.
I'll do it.
It of, basically, a, a schedule of options that the school committee could choose if they see the proposed increase of six point one nine gross operating expense too high. You know, I personally believe in this recommendation that was given to us, and I've always sort of understood, you know, and while I, I've said, you know, quite frankly, you know, sure, I don't like putting six point two percent in front of the towns, 'cause I understand the demand that means, I also understand where it's coming from and why the number is what it is. So, you know, I just wanna put out that, you know, I still do believe in this, and then as, you know, we move forward and see what is out there on how that number is to be lowered, should the school committee decide that it is unacceptable and, you know, what an acceptable number would be, I was rather uncomfortable even bringing it to the table, but was convinced otherwise that it is necessary if people are asking, you know, and members of this committee are asking what it would take to get that number down, you know, here's a list of what it's gonna take, and it's really, really painful to look at.
I, yeah, I, I am, I am too uncomfortable with bringing a list. I, I don't. I don't like the concept. I don't like the proposed, you know, this is, I don't like the proposed idea that says, you know, we're, you know, we need to know what is, what we would be losing. We know what we're losing. We're losing level service. We are, you know, it is, this is what it costs to make level service, and this is, and it's not, it's not a nice number. It's not a happy number. It's, you know, it's, it's uncomfortable, but it's the number, and if we want to remain a level service district, it's not going to change. And a lot, and as Jeff just pointed out, some of those drivers are not something we can control. And that's, you know, and that's a point we have to, we have to wrestle with.
Right, a, a, and I think it's also important to notice that the, you know, the, the major drivers are not on the list we're gonna find, no matter what, our out-of-district tuitions, no matter what that number is, if it's six point one nine or any other number, our out-of-district tuitions are going to be what they are. That's a, that's a given.
And I'm kind of, I kind of wanna say that it is, it is not fair of us to want to apply pressure in some other part of the budget because our out-of-district tuitions are through the roof. And there are, and, and I don't think that that equally apportioned a good education to everyone if we're, if we're reaching out into the other portion of the budget to cut left and right to service. What, what amounts to fifty people, even though they deserve, the fifty people deserve just as good an education as the other fifteen hundred students in the district. The other fifteen hundred students don't deserve to get screwed because the other fifty require so much more than they did.
But at the same time, this is part of the process.
Right.
Right? So, the process, and I'll, and I'll keep saying the same thing time after time. So, the process is that it starts with a recommendation. So, whether we're the Hamilton-Wentworth Regional School District or a private industry, a private company, this is how the process works. So, this is, this is, and out of respect for members of the committee who have made comments about the number being potentially too high, or what are some things that we could potentially consider to trim? That's part of the process, and I think it's a healthy conversation for the committee to have that conversation so that when we, when we get to next week, we, we can hopefully be in a place where, you know, everybody's on the same page and we can pass a budget, because if we don't pass a budget, it's gonna get really hard for everybody.
Right, and, and.
So, I encourage a healthy debate and dialogue around the six point one nine, and hopefully you're educated enough to, to understand what's in it, and then look at the list to say, okay, you know, they weren't kidding when they said they've, they've cleaned the level service out to the extent over the last five or six years that we're running lean, right? So, we're not talking about cutting into fat. We're talking about right, right through the skin into the muscle and into the bone in some, some instances. But I think the conversation's a good one to have, and everybody's entitled to their opinion, but it's part of the process.
Right, and, and that's really what you said to me last week, that I said, okay, let's move forward, because I do agree with that.
It's okay to have this conversation.
It's okay to have this conversation.
You know, but, you know, I, I don't, it, it's some ways, you know.
And this is by no stretch of the imagination, a recommendation that's coming from me or from Mike.
Absolutely.
We're presenting to you options, should you consider to reduce the six point one nine percent off of that point by some number, I don't know what it may or may not be.
Right.
These are the things that you'll have to consider, because there's nothing else.
Right.
We can't touch teacher salaries. They are what they are. We signed a contract. We can't touch out-of-district placements. They are what they are, right? We can't touch health insurance unless you wanna run the risk of, you know, my placeholder for a six percent increase, which is at the low end of the current marketplace, to be out of whack. So, you know, you won't see those items on a potential list.
Right.
Because we view them as fixed, okay?
So, if I can help facilitate the conversation going forward, so I think, you know, we've heard the, we've seen and over a number of meetings, Mike and Jeff's recommended budget, which includes OPEB and also the SRO, right? So, that's, that's included in that six point one nine percent gross operating expense. So, I think we need to think through and sort of get a sense about whether or not the school committee as a whole wants to continue those two items in the, in the recommended budget.
Can I just understand the bottom line here? So, if we were to take this entire list and eliminate it, is it correct that our budget increase would be one point nine two percent?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
So, the, this is the list of things, potential expense categories, that we came up with. And they, they're valued at one point three six one million dollars, or as Michelle just mentioned, I'll say it a different way. It's valued at four point, four point two seven percent increase over prior year budget. That's the value.
Fifty-nine.
Thank you.
But this, this list is not a recommendation, and it's not prioritized.
And Jeff, can you remind us of how much you've put in for the increase for the busing contract? And do you know when we'll know that number?
Yeah, so we'll put, I'll, I'll answer that in reverse order. So, we'll put it out to bid in the March-April timeframe.
Okay.
Follow the procurement laws for under thirty B. Probably know April-May timeframe. So, what I've, what I've incorporated is in the.
Fourth line.
Fourth line down, in district transportation.
Yeah.
It's an eight, a little over an eight percent increase. So, we currently pay, we currently pay two hundred and ninety-five days per bus.
How much?
Sorry, two hundred and ninety-five dollars per day per bus.
Oh, okay.
The current marketplace for light communities like ours is somewhere in the three twenty to three fifty range.
Yep.
Cost per day per bus.
Okay.
So, I've brought our budget into the bottom end of that marketplace range, which has generated an eight point two percent increase.
What is our anticipated circuit breaker balance after we take that money? I guess it's, this is, I know it's hard to calculate, so I guess my question is, what is our circuit breaker balance now? And what do we plan to spend? And I realize that that money will be replenished, so I'm just, it may be negative. I understand that, too.
So, our circuit breaker balance in the revolving account?
Yeah.
Was two hundred and, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at the end of FY eighteen.
Okay.
And if you recall my last forecast.
Yep.
We, we plan to use that in its entirety.
Okay.
So, we're gonna, and I said this at that meeting.
Yep.
We're gonna deplete that in order to cover.
This year.
This year's overage.
Yep.
Right? So, this number has nothing to do with that.
Okay. And then.
The second, second part of that answer from Michelle was, if you look at this sheet, if you look at the second line, expense offsets, you can see that there's, our expense offsets are increasing by roughly two hundred K.
Yep.
I think eighty thousand of that expense offset increase is my estimation of an increase in our circuit breaker reimbursement.
Yeah.
So, if you think about it, guys, right, so if your, if your, if your special ed expenses are increasing at a rapid rate and the reimbursement rate for circuit breaker in the state budget remains unchanged, your reimbursement will cha, will increase, too. So, we've reflected a component of that in the expense offset line.
Yeah.
And then, as we discussed a few weeks ago, I have, I work with the Director of Student Services to take a current look at future placements for FY twenty, and we developed the, the out-of-district budget that we presented earlier, which is a thirty-one percent increase over current year budget. So, budget to budget was forty-two placements to fifty-two placements.
And.
So, that, that increase is offset by, you know, eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Because of an anticipated increase in circuit breaker offset that we find in a different part of the budget.
Yeah.
Schedules.
Yeah, so the money that's currently in there, we expect to deplete this year.
Yes.
And that, the money you have in the budget there is the money that has been spent this year to cover those expenses, that will come in.
Right, come back to us as a reimbursement next year, right?
So, there's not any money sort of like hanging out there.
Nothing left there.
Um.
So, this is the kind of stuff that keeps me up at night.
Yep.
Not having a reserve account.
Well, and that's also bad because it leaves, you know, if you do have an out-of-district, an unanticipated out-of-district placement that's expensive, you, there's, there's no money there to cover that without either cutting or going back to the town.
Yeah, so what, what we would do in that instance hypothetically is we would, we would, we would operationalize that, right?
Yeah.
So, we would look at, we would look at our budget. So, let's talk about, let's say the budget as presented gets approved, and we move it a year from now, if the budget is over by two hundred and fifty K, right? We don't have a reserve account anymore hypothetically, so what are we gonna do about that? How are we gonna not go over our appropriation?
Right.
So, we would work internally with our leadership team to exhaust opportunities in our operating budget, but not at the expense of our service delivery model, right? And then, let's say we do that, and let's say we come up with a hundred K, and let's say there's a hundred and fifty K left in overage.
Yeah.
That's when you, we'd have to ask to use E and D.
And, um, do you remember what the number was that we submitted?
For which?
For E and D to, to the DR, was it like one point two or one point three or?
Yeah, and the, it's, it's the one point two and change.
Okay.
And the leftover is that one forty-seven number, and we're actually, Vinnie and I are currently working with the Department of Revenue and our auditors to try to get that certified here in the next couple of weeks.
Nine hundred.
And, um, so I don't remember a time where we've used E and D other than for something that was like a study.
So, we've never used E and D in my six years here.
Right.
Or in Mike's seven. But we did, we have given a ton back. In my first two years, we gave back four million.
Yeah, well, there were some.
Because there were.
Liberal budgeting happening.
There was bad budgeting.
So, if we held E and D at two percent, what would that number be, is what I was trying to figure out?
Instead of three?
Yeah.
Call it three hundred K. It'd be three hundred K and change, but just use three hundred K. That's, I mean, but that's a policy, so that would take several weeks.
Oh, Jeff, it's very painful for me to ask that question. You have no idea how painful that is for me to ask that question.
Could you speak up just a little, Michelle?
You have no idea how painful it is for me to ask that question, as someone who argued for the three percent really hard.
I mean, I've asked myself that question, so I, I think it's on point. I, I think it's dangerous to go there, and, and my advice would be to not touch it, and I'll tell you why. Because of what I said three minutes ago. We're not gonna have any other reserves.
Right.
So, to deplete what little reserve you have, I think would be fiscally unsound.
And so, the only sort of like stabilization type other fund that we have is that regional bus one, right? And that can only be spent on.
You don't use it, you give it back. So, there's twenty-five grand in that, it's, and you gotta give it back to E and D.
We'll have to give it back.
So, it goes into a general fund.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, the money from two years ago?
Mm-huh.
Was put into the E and D sausage grinder this year, and it's part of that one forty-seven give, anticipated give back for E and D. So, there's a very prescribed process that we have to follow for that. There, there's nothing.
There's nothing because we run so lean.
Very lean.
Yeah, so we, you know, over the past six years, no, you're throwing me a softball.
Right.
So, so over the last six years, we've scrubbed this thing down, and we've, you know, we've developed a foundation, but foundation principally in our, in our staffing model that is truly level service. It's the staff that Mike and the leadership team need to deliver on his mission statement. That's what it is. And sometimes, bad things happen, like, you know, like, you know, the increases in some of these categories that we didn't anticipate, but in the reality of things, it is what it is.
So, Mike, can you talk to the value of the math ELA elementary coordinator position and how that is additive to the learning process versus what, say, Peggy does?
Absolutely. I mean, Peggy, Peggy is not a content expert, so Peggy, you know, her background is, is in the secondary administration and, and secondary curriculum, and so having an ELA and a math coordinator position to actually serve as those content specialists and be, you know, Peggy's resources, basically, for, you know, operationalizing, you know, in this case today, this year, the math implementation of, of the new math materials. You know, Christine Fischera is quarterbacking that whole process, you know, through the elementary schools. And so, running Wednesday afternoon trainings, you know, you know, it's how, actually Christine ran the team to select the, what materials we decided to go with. So, it, it would really, for both of those positions, that would really hamstring our ability to actually implement curricular changes at the elementary level.
Yeah.
We would still do things, but they would take a lot longer to do, because Peggy would be, you know, one person trying to run, run that all herself.
And how important is that for, that to be an employee versus, say, some, one you contracted on, you know, we need this specific thing, come in, contract with us?
I think, I think we, we do that contract piece as well that supplements things, but they come, you know, for example, so for this, I'll give you the math as an example. So, we've had Turk come in once on the, the all-day workshop day in October. So we've had Turk come in once on the, the all-day workshop day, um, in October and they're gonna come back again in March and run a one-day training. But that's it, that's, you know, that's about as far as we can go and our, our PD budget is stretched pretty thin to, to even make that happen. And so, you know, it's somebody who's in the classrooms every day, you know, I, I guess the best way I can describe it is quality control. Somebody who's in there making sure that what, you know, Turk trained everybody on is now actually happening Monday through Friday for the, you know, three months that, that Turk isn't here.
And Peggy can't do that to kind of make sure that that's done? Because I know before all that, I mean, we did have, you know, Celeste, but, so I'm just trying to say.
Not, not very much happened. We've, we've done, since we've been able to have all of these resources in place, our, our, our ability to actually implement things has increased exponentially. It really is, you know.
It's our leverage.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, those are Peggy's resources. Um, you know, and I thought when, when we put those positions into place, that was an integral piece that, you know, we had, you know, you have a director, but then there's no resources to actually manage, you know, to actually put into play to, to make things happen, so.
At the same time you're trying to increase the output of the math level throughout the district.
Right.
You, you don't wanna go back to the res- you know.
Yeah, and it said, could we do, could you do that? Sure, but things would slow down a lot. You know, because Peggy not only works with those two people, but she also works with all the six to twelve curriculum leaders on the, the middle high school and she meets with them, you know, at least, I was gonna say probably twice a week, you know, a- as well as meeting with the, the, um, English and math coordinators at the elementary level with the elementary principals and, you know, there's, there's a constant, um, you know, work, there's constant work that's going on, um, all across there. You know, so if, if Peggy doesn't have resources at the elementary level, then she's not meeting with the six to twelves and, you know, to help them, to help direct them and, and what they're doing.
And then this, um, high school, middle school, fine arts teaching position?
Mm-huh.
Um, would that be shared, is that shared between the two schools or this is just like an and/or thing?
It, it's, it's, it's a piece that we looked at, you know, one of the things, when we looked at the, the class size report, there's, we felt there were some things that were undersubscribed.
Mm-huh.
You know, so, you know, would I recommend doing it? No, but, you know, it, it looked like if we, if we needed to, that would be a place where we might be able to.
And so would then this be affecting choices?
But again, that would.
Or would this be increasing class sizes?
Absolutely. It would, it would do both. It would increase, increase the, the choices that kids would have.
Decrease.
Decrease, I'm sorry. Decrease the choices that kids would have and it would increase class size.
And high school's already having a hard time with classes and gaining schedule because if you're freshmen.
These are the issues.
Yeah, well, when you get to, when you're a freshman, you get your eighth or ninth choice. So it makes it really hard and you get some not good choices.
Putting this list together was hard.
It was hard.
Really hard.
Yep, and then, um, this, this is like no money really, but this IT technician position?
Right.
Um, is this, where does this person sit or like what does this kind of look like?
So we have a, so no, no stern, no stone unturned, right?
Right.
So we looked at every part of the organization and we say, we think we have it right in terms of staffing.
Yep.
But if we had to make a cut, could we live without one IT tech? One of our few IT tech positions? We could, but would our service diminish?
Yeah.
Same with all these.
Right now it's roughly one per building, is it?
With aging infrastructure, it seems highly dangerous to do.
Well, and it's the.
With aging infrastructure, it seems.
Right, with aging infrastructure.
It is the second, the second, second least money saver.
Right.
Yeah, it's.
But.
So, and right now we have six techs, right, in IT is what I had seen in the budget?
So what I wanna really try to stay away from is talking about people.
Yeah.
I know, but that's how many we have is six and this would make it five, is that right?
So we have, we have three technicians, we have one data specialist.
Okay.
We have one network specialist, we have one Apple kind of deployment manager expert and we have Allen. So this takes the techs from three to two. So those are the people that deal with the level one support, right? You have problems with your, I have a PC, so I have a problem with a PC. So we've reduced that support structure by a third. That's a big deal.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about. So everybody's, so a teacher has a problem?
Right.
Ten other teachers have a problem, there's two, there would be two techs.
They put in a ticket to get, get some work done and it's gonna take a lot longer.
It's gonna take, the, the, the service level is, is gonna be diminished.
Well, you might not even have service in your building that day.
Yeah.
Or possibly.
Yeah.
I mean, every day is different, right?
Right.
So same with, same with, you know, some of these other things, right?
Maintenance technician.
Do we think we have the staffing right in the secretarial pool? We do, but, you know, if we had to, as a last resort, could we eliminate some positions? If you decide so?
How?
Is that gonna put a lot of pressure on a lot of people? Yeah.
Yes.
How many high school secretarial positions are there?
Three and a half, three and a half FTE. So we have, uh, two full-time in the front office. We have, uh, nearly a full-time in, uh.
Guidance.
Uh, guidance and we have a, a halftime person, um, that does records and other compliance types things.
Okay.
Do we operate with one fewer? We could. Would it be easier, easy? No.
I wasn't part of the conversation about the user fees. Why, uh, sorry, I wasn't part of the conversation about user fees. Why did we, um, why did we reduce user fees?
There's a large, uh, sort of, uh, community, um, we actually had a lot of.
There were twenty-five people here.
Outreach, just wanting lower user fees.
It's exponentially larger than.
Right, it is large compared to zero.
Hi, Vinnie.
Hi, Vinnie.
Um, and, you know, there was a lot of, you, sort of like the, the tennis courts this year, sort of seen a lot of representative tennis courts. Um, it was way more than that last year about, um, the user fees. Um, and really we just, or Jeff looked at comparable, comparable districts and what the user fee structure was, uh, like there and then incorporated a, um, structure of reducing fees uh, within our district. So kind of based off of more common numbers around, um, the K-PAD.
So historically, Peter, um, if you think about the whole athletic program, there's multiple components. There's the twenty-six athletic programs, then there's the, uh, I'll call it the Athletic Director's Office, right? And then there's the amount of money that the district, um, spends in user relief and then there's the family user relief pool and we've got some rules around that. And then there's a scholarship pool, so there's a number of different elements. And historically before this year, when you looked at it on kind of a macro level, the district was paying half of the pie through its operating budget. So the whole cost was roughly seven hundred and fifty K, roughly, right? So the district was paying half and user fees were funding half, okay? And, um, throughout the month of Jan- January last year, there was a lot of feedback. There was, some folks came to our work, budget workshop, a bunch of people showed up here, there were a lot of emails. And, uh, the school committee at the time, um, considered the feedback and wanted to reduce that fifty-fifty ratio to something different. And then the conversation continued and I, I suggested that if you were to, to shift twenty-five percent of the pie into the operating budget in the form of reduced user fees, that would cost the district a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the majority of the committee agreed to do that.
It wasn't unanimous?
It was not unanimous.
It was not unanimous?
Um, so what we did is we, at that direction, and it was at this meeting last year, it was the meeting before the budget, the final meeting.
Might have been unanimous.
We then took the direction to incorporate that one seventy-seven into the operating budget that was then presented to the committee for consideration at the next February meeting. And then it was, the budget was adopted, um, I think five-two. That's my recollection.
Thank you.
But that's kind of a, a brief history of the history.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, so we're gonna be meeting next week with the FinComs. I'd like to understand what their, uh, support will be around the OPEB trust fund contribution. I think they'll be supportive, but I don't know. Um, because that is a pretty big driver on this particular list here.
That, that was the feedback I got on January seventh from the Hamilton.
Yeah, I was what? I think.
That they, that they were supportive. They were supportive of the OPEB.
They were pushing that.
They, they, they actually thanked.
Yeah.
You, that you actually heard what they had said in the first meeting and had, you know, had it, had it there.
And.
And we're, and we're considering it.
Um, Jeff, in his response to us, gave us a number that we are actually spending in this year.
So don't misconstrue that number. So that's the pay-as-you-go, it's an actuarial valuation.
Right.
Right? And that's their estimate of the pay-as-you-go expense, um, that is associated with FY twenty.
And do you?
That's not in the budget per se.
Right.
Uh, what do you mean by that? I mean, we're paying that, right?
Well, that's their valuation. This, we're talking operating budget and an actuary evaluation?
Yep.
Very different things.
No, I think Michelle's looking for the number we actually spent.
What did you, yeah, that is what I'm looking for, but what?
Their, their value in nine seventy-five.
Say that again?
Nine hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So it's, oh, it's a lot more than we would be contributing.
No, 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 that.
No, but it gives a.
Gives a scale.
Scale of, for people to understand.
That the two fifty is cheap given the nine seventy-five.
That the two fifty is not, yeah, is a, I, I, I honestly didn't know if it was more or less than two fifty, two fifty. I think now I can assume it's more than two fifty.
No, they're not, they're, they're two different things, right? The nine seventy-five is a valuation of the current value of benefits in the context of OPEB.
For the future.
For, no, current.
Right, so.
Current, no, 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 no.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with future liability. That's where, that's where the gap is created if you don't have a fund.
Right, so.
The fu- my funding proposal is to fund both current and future liabilities out for, out thirty years. That's the purpose of a fund.
Right.
Pay-as-you-go only funds current benefits.
Right.
Therefore, pay-as-you-go is a, is a, is a disaster waiting to happen.
So the nine hundred thousand dollars is or is not the amount that we're paying as we go this year?
That's the number that the actuary has estimated we might pay based on his assumptions. Which have been outlined.
And would you say that is within a reasonable margin of error?
I think very highly of our actuary.
So just statistically, probably yes.
Yeah, so the amount we would be putting into OPEB.
And I, and I, I'm very comfortable with our, I'm very comfortable with our he- our healthcare budget.
The amount that we're putting in, proposing to put into OPEB to pay in the future is roughly twenty-five percent of what we actually probably pay in an individual year for those expenses. Is that a true statement? I'm trying to understand the scale here.
The two fifty is part of a funding strategy?
Right.
Looks out thirty years.
Right.
That would fully fund the OPEB liability that the actuary has calculated. That's what the two fifty is.
From that thirty-year point forward.
So the two fifty, so I'll, I'll, I'll remind you of my proposal, so that.
I understand what the proposal is, I'm trying to.
Does everybody else understand? Because there's six other members.
Okay.
Does, do other people?
I, I'm.
Want me to help answer the question or no?
Is that good?
No?
They're good?
I think.
Go for it, go for it, Jeff.
So this has nothing to do with pay-as-you-go, the OPEB trust fund. Other than that if you would adopt and fund, based on my strategy, in thirty years, the actuaries have confirmed that your liability will be covered.
In perpetuity.
So he says.
And if we go to single payer healthcare, we get all that money back?
I have no opinion on that.
Yeah, I don't know.
It doesn't solve it.
If something radically changed.
They'd have to change the law.
Law would have to change, but.
I'm sure a major change in the law like that would.
The law is that money goes into the trust fund and it stays there, it doesn't come out.
There would, there would still be some liability.
Yeah.
Because there's people that are retired or will be retiring, so there's liability. What that would look like, I, I don't know.
All right, so.
What I do know is that our current estimated liability is real and it's growing every day and that I, I, I really recommend to the committee that we begin to do something about it.
It's unsustainable.
This has nothing to do with what Hamilton and FinCom and what the Wentworth FinCom want? This is the right thing to do.
This is creating a process of making it.
Now, in order to set up this, the OPEB, I thought we had voted in some things last year, did we not?
Never voted anything.
No, we haven't set up, we haven't.
We didn't vote to accept some chapter something or other.
Thirty-two B twenty? No, you never did.
Cause I thought, all right, so that was one of the steps that needed to be completed that we did not do.
That's part of my recommendation.
So that's what I was trying to figure out because I thought, you know, so we had budgeted forty thousand, ended up going somewhere, but I thought we had voted in some starting a fund and.
Never did anything.
Cause there was no need to do it yet.
My recommendation includes a recommended advisor and all the steps, um, including an amount and a funding, thirty-year funding strategy.
So, so when you're looking at things like OPEB, right? And I come in here and I'm very vocal about not liking level service budgets, that I don't think, um, creating a world-class education system is going to happen by continually, um, creating level service budgets. Um, OPEB is one of the things on here that is looking at long-term future success of this district. Um, and, and it, it's, what it's doing is it's actually setting up, you know, financial se- our security is the right word I'm looking for, but it's lessening our li- our, your, our liability in the future. So it's, it's, it's good fiscal sense for the district. So it's not necessary, it's a tough number to look at right here on this piece of paper, but looking forward, looking long beyond all of us sitting at this table, of all of our children being in the school district anymore.
Yeah.
This is how you're setting up the future success, you know, and possibly their children. Actually, it would be their children if they're still in the community within these schools, setting up financial success for future generations, you know? And when you're looking at high budget numbers year over year, sometimes it can be tough to be planning for the future, but we all know that, that, that is a necessity, right? It's like you have to pay your bills and you also have to, you know, um, put money into savings for, um, a rainy day down the road. Excuse me, and this isn't even a rainy day fund. This is something that the district is going to be li- you know, um, liable to have to pay at some point. So we're actually creating a fund for that to happen.
And at the thirty-year mark, then we don't have to pay this amount or the, the OPEB amount that pays you go.
So that's the recommendation, so the goal of my recommendation was to develop a, uh, a contribution schedule that based on a set of assumptions, in thirty years, the fund would be fully funded at a hundred percent. That was, that was my goal in, in, in developing the recommendation that I made to you guys a couple of weeks ago.
Then the pay-as-you-go line item disappears as well, right? Cause we don't have to pay as we're going, cause it's gonna be fully funded.
So we're gonna continue to include healthcare costs in our operating budget, right? But simultaneously, we're gonna, we're, hopefully, if you, if you follow our recommendation, you're gonna, through the adoption of this statute and the creation of a fund and following my recommendate, recommended funding strategy, you're going to develop a pool of co- a pool of funds that will be there in thirty years or whenever you need it to pay those future liabilities. When they can't be funded through an operating budget anymore, right? Because at some point they're gonna, they're gonna, I'll use a snowball analogy, going down a big hill, like an avalanche. They're gonna avalanche, excuse me, you know, municipalities in, um, in, in Massachusetts and, and other places. And, um, I wouldn't be surprised to see a law that requires municipalities and regional school districts to fund a fund at some point. A law doesn't current, currently exist, it's just sound financial practice. And I'm recommending to you guys that you. And I'm recommending to you guys that you get ahead of the curve. You know, if you throw ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollars at this thing, it's, it, it's nothing. It's meaningful money. So, the recommendation is two fifty this year, two fifty, an additional two fifty every year for five years till you hit one point two five million. And then you string that out until our Essex pension fund is fully funded in fifteen or twenty years. Then you take the money that's in our operating budget, that's currently used to fund the pension fund. And then you redeploy that and you put it into the OPEB fund. So, for the final ten years of my proposed schedule, you'll be, uh, the district would be contributing, uh, two point eight million dollars annually into the fund. That will be earning interest if it's invested properly.
Okay, that was my question. Like, how are we gonna fund it, like, going into the future? What were your thoughts on that? So, that gives me, yeah.
I went over all, I went over all this stuff in extraordinarily detailed.
Well, when the investment advisor comes to, we'll understand what the regulations are around how you can invest, cause that's true of the funds that we have too.
Yeah, so there's no regulations. It's, it's kind of a- it's appetite.
Oh, interesting.
So, how much appetite does this committee have for asset allocation?
Okay.
So, do you want to invest in cash? Wouldn't, wouldn't plan on it. It's a thirty-year investment goal. So, be aggressive. You're gonna have your ups and downs, but be aggressive. That's the only way you're gonna get return on your investment.
There's no laws dictating how aggressive or limit, limiting the risky, uh, we could put it in Bitcoin.
No, there's controls though. So, you have tru-.
Reed Farms.
You have trustees, Peter?
Yeah.
So, you can have a board of trustees or you can have a single trustee. If the committee chooses not to establish a board of trustees, then by default, the district treasurer becomes the trustee. That's why I've recommended that you develop a policy. In that policy, you can set investment strategy and allocation methodologies that the treasurer, in the event he's the trustee or she's the trustee, cannot go outside of. So, there's a lot of things that are included in my recommendation that I would, I would hope the committee consider.
Thank you.
So, is there a recommendation forthcoming or do you feel that we've received that?
We have to approve this first, right? So, there's no need to make a recommendation.
Okay.
If we take it off the.
Yeah, I mean, it has to get, you know, it has to go.
Okay, cause I felt like I hadn't seen all those things you were talking about, okay.
No, 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 it has to be, but this also, you know, this is the first step. It would, this doesn't actually come to us until July first if the budget, if, if the committee adopts this as part of the budget and then if it's approved by town meeting. So, we have time to set up the fund and then, and then actually do the, do it in FY twenty, really.
Well, I have.
The recommendation is to, so the law requires a regional school district to fund an OPEB fund in its annual budget process. So, that's what this recommendation is.
Right.
It's a recommendation for you to fund the fund. Effective July first, two thousand nineteen, with two hundred and fifty K. We've put it on the list of things you could potentially cut if you so choose.
So, I have two generic comments or basic comments. I feel that we should reduce the amount of the athletic user fee relief. Not for the purpose of decreasing our budget recommendation, but I feel that we should be allocating some of that money to other activities so that we more equitably distribute and balance our support for all extracurricular activities and don't just focus on those that are, revolve around athletics. And I am not going to support having the school resource officer be part of the school budget.
I, I just want to jump, uh, jump in right there in saying that I, I, I don't think it's a good idea reducing the athletic user fees. We had a, like I said, you know, a good contingent of, of citizens come last year and really asked for this and, and we got a lot of thanks and praise for actually doing this and bringing it in line and in level with, um, you know, at least other Cape Town schools, um, you know, to sort of unilaterally say, well, I think it should be spread across, you know, other, um, you know, other divisions, sort of just blindly, isn't really a good direction for moving forward. Uh, I'm not saying that there aren't other, um, fees that could be looked to reduce in the operating budget moving forward, but I don't think this is the way to go about it. Um, the other thing about this school resource officer is I've also made it very clear that I really don't care for school resource officers. And that's my general opinion, but I don't, at the same time, removing this from the budget isn't going to do anything. I- i- it's not going to keep, you know, potentially keep a town from, you know, we don't know that they're gonna have an override, but it, I, it, it's not gonna reduce anything in either direction. The way I've sort of settled looking at this is there has been, you know, um, from the administration team that I really, you know, trust and respect. The, you know, they, they've come out in support of this SRO and that, you know, um, town of Hamilton at that January seventh meeting has also really, um, expressed their happiness with they're coming up. And, you know, they're working diligently on, you know, funding it themselves one hundred percent. The way I'm looking at this personally is I'm looking at this as a seventy-three thousand dollar placeholder, so next year I can push to get that uh, extra, um, counselor up at the high school that didn't make the list this year. And that's what's making me feel better. I know that's a need that, uh, exists at the high school and that's something that's sort of near and dear to me that I want to move forward. And so, that's how I'm looking at it this way and I plan after the cycle to go, really to begin the process of pushing that, um, to look forward to twenty, um, FY twenty-one. But, you know, I, I just wanted to sort of put those out there because I, I was gonna sort of bring that up anyway. But I, I think it's important to note that, you know, to not approve the budget because of a seventy-three thousand dollar placeholder doesn't make sense. We're, we're looking at, you know, a, um, i- i- it's, it's point one of a po- you know, is it?
So, for every three hundred and forty thousand dollars you cut, the six point one nine percent is reduced by a one point, one basis point, so.
And even though we're not meeting until next Tuesday, I can tell you, we're looking at probably this entire list to avoid, to, you know, slide under any, anything with the towns. And again, that's, I don't know anything, you know, and we won't know until next Tuesday, but you're looking at cutting out this whole list to make any sort of, um, real impact. And again, I am not in support of that and I would not be voting for that at all. I actually, I, I believe in this, in this budget as proposed.
So, Michelle, can I actually ask you a question? Cause I want to understand, cause, um, are you objecting to the school resource officer as on principle or because you, because you feel that it's, um, a cost that would, that should be borne by the towns?
I feel like it's a cost that should be borne by.
I agree too. I'm against this.
The town in which the officer works.
Okay.
So.
I get that.
If it's an employee of Hamilton, I feel that Hamilton should pay for that cost. If we want to sign some sort of an agreement with them, similar to the one we have for the person who directs the traffic that says we pay the town of Hamilton a certain amount of money to cover that cost.
Yep.
That's fine, but I think they're willing to pay.
They are.
They are, and that's what I agree taking it out.
I think we should allow them to do that.
But the cost still has to come through their district, guys, okay?
It would be a reimbursement by the town.
So, I don't have a bo- I don't have a body in here. I have contracted services in the amount of seventy-three thousand dollars. This is not a body. This is not an employee of the district. This is exactly what you're talking about and the regional agree-.
But I think they're willing to do it without us reimbursing.
The regional agreement requires that all expenses go through the, the district.
I'm not sure about that part.
And be, we apportion in a certain way according to the regional agreement.
But I don't know. It's a good question.
We also have an obligation to report.
That's, yeah.
Our operating expenses to the Department of Education through our end-of-year report in a, in a certain way, in an inclusive way, which includes costs for school, school securities, including school resource officers. So, the expense, if you're gonna have one, needs to be in the district.
So, I think this is a question that we need to ask. My impression has been, and perhaps I did not understand what Hamilton was saying, was that they wanted to have a person on their police force that would be assigned the duties of a school resource officer and that they wanted to pay for that service.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the expense has to sit in the district.
And.
And it can be covered.
Where does it say that, that it has to be in the district, an expense in the district?
Well, it says it in the regional, regional agreement.
That's not what I read.
That all, all expenses, operating expenses will filter through the district and be apportioned in a certain way. And our reporting requirements to this, to the Department of Education require us to report expenses associated with school security, including school resource officers in our end-of-year report. And the only way that happens is if it comes through our net assessment statement.
So, I am curious then, like, when I ask other school committees if they pay for their school resource officer and they say, no, that's provided by the town or we have an agreement where we pay part and they pay part, how is that possible?
I don't know anything about other, other districts. It's not my job.
Cause part of this process is actually creating that agreement. And again, just like the OPEB trust, we can't create that agreement until we actually approve the budget of the resource officer and actually vote it in and, and get it through as part of our budget.
And.
So, that whole agreement part doesn't happen until we actually have.
And the agreement that is recommended.
And I don't feel comfortable with having it in our budget.
And the agreement that is recommended by the state puts the cost, the employee as an employee of the town and puts the cost there.
The.
So, that is where my issue lies.
Here's the question. If we eliminate this school resource officer position, am I gonna get you to approve the budget on February thirteenth?
It depends on what the town officials say about the OPEB. That would be my other concern. Otherwise, I think it's clear that, um, based on the contract that was approved that we have a very expensive budget to cover this year. So, the answer, I mean, the short answer is yes. I'm not sure about this OPEB thing yet.
Stacy said you weren't comfortable with the school resource officer also.
Correct.
So, again, if, if we got rid of this position, right? So, what we're looking for here, I'm sorry.
Placeholder.
You're correct. You're correct.
Spence.
So, thank you. And I did tell you to watch my vocabulary. Oops, sorry, I almost lost my gum. So, again, you know, if it's too high, what can we decrease? And this is what we're talking about. If this SRO position is eliminated, are you then comfortable with the budget going forward, you know, in February thirteenth? And, and again, we need to hear from the towns. I understand this on February, excuse me, February fifth. But at this point, you know, we're, we're at, you know, the eleven o'clock hour here and, and I want to make sure that, you know, we're going in and, and we're a unified body in, 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 you know, moving forward and bringing this forward to the towns.
What exactly are we waiting to hear from the towns on the OPEB? Ju- just out of my curiosity.
I just want to know that they are gonna support this recommendation.
Which I'm comfortable bringing with the town, cause I really feel they are.
And I, I think they will. I don't know. Um, I just have one last question, which is that if we've been sending these students out of district, that would make one think that we lost a student out of a program or out of, you know, a teacher now has one less, two less students on a caseload. Is there a place, where, why aren't we saving on our in-district costs? Or how are we saving on our in-district costs when we send a kid out of district?
Cut it, keep it in last year's budget, didn't we? That we lost the program?
Nope, we brought the program back.
I mean, you're talking about an increase in out-of-district placements of twenty-six over a five-year period.
Right.
So, uh, at various levels throughout the district.
Yep, you're talking about a doubling of.
So, it, I mean, I, I don't think it's, it's as fluid as you're, you're suggesting. It could be.
Okay.
Uh, nothing we've seen from Stacy says that there's a, there's a program that's empty.
In my, uh, when I asked Stacy about the number of kids in district and out of district, she said there were just simply more kids in need of more services, was the simple answer she gave.
Yes, our.
And, you know, and, and while that's sad because, you know, you don't want to see anybody struggle, it's, we've, we have a lot of kids with, you know, and we have fifty-one of them that need services. So, I'm, in my wish to understand, uh, your positions, uh, Stacy, Michelle, either of you. Is your issue with the position itself, or the, the placeholder itself? Or how it's, how it shows up or fit, or with the position, with the, the physically having the, the person there?
It's the payment.
I don't care if there's a person there. I don't care if there's a person there. I, it's the payment. I think, the town of Hamilton has offered to pay and that's how, you know, I'd like to.
Wouldn't the.
I have not gotten any word from them. They, they were considering it, but they have not offered to pay.
I would imagine.
There's, there's no funds currently dedicated, appropriated, choose the word that you want to choose to cover the cost of a school resource officer beginning in FY.
Twenty.
Twenty.
The next school year.
Alright, so seventy-three thousand for a position.
So, because of that, Mike and I are re- are recommending that we begin a school resource officer program beginning.
For September.
For September. So, we felt that our recommendation needed to include the costs associated with that program in the operating budget for FY twenty.
But.
In the absence of any commitment from the town of Hamilton, which we don't have one yet.
We don't.
But that doesn't mean that they couldn't do this. It's, it's not a, but they don't have it at the moment. They, they, you know, and we don't want to do this, you know, wishy-washy. We want to do it.
I was there on January seventh. They were, they talked about the idea conceptually, but they had no definitive answer either way.
So, we, we felt that our recommendation this year needed to include.
We want to make sure it happens.
We wanted to make sure it happened, so we put it into the operating budget as a recommendation. And we got that value from Chief Stevens. And I incorporated it into the budget as a contracted services amount. A bill that we would get from the town of Hamilton for one of their officers, which is exactly the way we do it for everything else. We get a bill for their, um, directing traffic. We get a bill from the town of Wenton for mowing our lawns. We get a bill from the town of Hamilton, well, we used to, for mowing our lawns, so on and so forth.
So.
So, that's how it works, but the expense always sits with the district if the district is benefiting from the service.
So, on that note, is it possible that if Hamilton wanted to pick up this fee, they could simply fail to send us a bill?
Yep, they're not gonna, no, they couldn't. That would be, that would be.
They would have to send us a bill.
Okay, I'm just asking a question.
That would be derelict on their end for not assessing the contract. That would be poor fiscal management on their part.
I'm gonna follow the rules that govern municipal finance. And I'm gonna follow the rules that, as I interpret our regional agreement, and I'm gonna follow the rules as it applies to our reporting requirements to the Department of Education. That's my job. So, and I intend to follow them. So, if we can strike a deal between the towns, if we can strike a deal between the towns and the district and everybody agrees to them, I have no problem with that. But as it currently stands, an expense of the district has to go through the district. And the, and the expense of the district has to be, has to be represented on our end-of-year report to the Department of Education. Those are just the rules, guys. I didn't make them. So, I'm not gonna knowingly do something that is not right. So, if you want to strike this expense, that means that we don't have funding in the district budget for FY twenty for a school resource officer. That's all it means. And it'll get you three-tenths of a point. And it'll get you three-tenths of a point.
But if we leave the placeholder in there and we work with the towns, there's no reason we couldn't come up with an agreement to make this happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the expense stays here.
Yeah.
And we get bills.
And we can't, but we can't do that without the placeholder.
But we can't do that without the placeholder, was my point.
You can. You can generate a, a, an instantaneous budget variance.
Okay.
So if you don't budget for it, and we have a school resource, uh, resource officer come August twenty-seventh, or whatever the first day of school is, and we get a bill, I don't have any money to cover that expense. So you're gonna, every time I get a bill, you're gonna have a growing variance. So it's not an accounting issue that's on the table. It's, it's a strategic decision. Do you wanna school resource officer or not? We recommended that we have one for next year.
Excuse me. Um, so I understand your recommendation. Yeah, but what I'm hearing at the table, you know, I, I'm thinking of what's gonna happen February thirteenth and moving on from there. So, you know, what, what I'm hearing from the table is removing this because some of the members of the committee are uncertain. Um.
I've only heard from three people. So.
Do the other people have an opinion?
What's that?
Take a straw poll.
The, the resource officer?
Yep.
No, that, I mean, it's such a minor expense, that's. So that means next year, all of this is incorporated in our budget.
Mm-hmm.
So hypothetically, if all you were, all you instructed me to do was to remove the seventy-three thousand, it would be level service plus OPEB. That's it. And the number would change by three-tenths of a point.
But I'm saying that this number would be our, our new budget going forward, level services.
That would be your budget recommend, right, recommendation. It would be no longer ours.
No, but I'm, but I'm saying is if we take all of this and vote yes for this six point one nine percent increase.
What do you mean, take all of this? What do you mean?
No, if we include all this, if we just voted it in.
So if we don't.
We don't cut it.
You don't cut anything.
Don't cut it. Next year.
If six point one nine percent is added to, is what our budget is.
It's your base.
No, that's your, that's the recommendation.
Next year, next year, level service would be.
With.
I don't know about, I don't know about.
Uh, yeah, I don't know about next year.
That new number.
We don't know. Because every year we go, every year we go back, every year we go back to this, this square one, yeah.
Never in a million years that I think our, our, our out of district, let's go back to this. Right there. The second circle, Peter?
Yeah.
I never thought it would be eight, eight hundred and sixteen, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Right. And so, and, and other things.
So what I mean by that is I don't know what next year's level service will look like. I don't know.
And other things will be different. They just do. And it's year, year to year things that, um, you know, health insurance is a year to year, it's a one-year contract. That's all we can do. So we just don't know.
And that, that nine hundred thousand dollar out of district, I know we've talked about this, but we don't know why it's so high. We don't know why people.
We know why.
No.
Yeah, but I know, I know we know the math, but why, why did it blow up?
No, you, you, you heard Stacy talk about that for an hour and a half.
Talk about the numbers.
The whys.
Yeah.
If you look on radar, we, I mean, ours is pretty high if you look at comparable districts and it's just disappointing. And I'd like to, instead of, you know, even our regular education plus our special education, if, instead of like Peggy was talking about state, above the state average, I'd like to be able to go back. What we once used to look at was our cohorts as opposed to, we're above the state average. And right now is we're just trying to get above the state average. And I think we're a better school district than that. And right now, I think some of the regular education is suffering from all these high costs with special education, out of control cost.
So what are you suggesting then? I don't.
Maybe Stacy needs to look at how we're delivering the in district. Just, you know, is there a way to do it differently? I don't know. I don't, I don't pretend to know. I have no idea.
I, I, I don't know. I just, I'm so uncomfortable how those expenses have come so high. And I know we have to provide the education to everybody and provide the services. And I'm just trying to figure out. And I know we brought on a out of district O D team chair position and, you know, how has that helped? I just feel like our costs are going up and then we added someone who I thought was supposed to kind of help, kind of go through that, maybe not, or just see where they're at.
So that place, that position's been in place for four months.
We remember that.
That person's been on staff for four months.
Yeah. It's too early to tell. But the way that it was designed is that you project it out, we will see savings, right?
And, and the other piece is that Stacy has looked at our programming. And last year came to us with recommendations that, again, we've made an investment in.
Yeah.
For programs in district that are, you know, designed to save us money in the long run. But, you know, those things are gonna, you know, and we've had this conversation with the Hamilton Finance Committee as well. They understand. That's a long-term process. That's, that's not something we're gonna see in four months.
I mean, I know, I just would feel comfortable, you know. I know it's a budget recommendation and it's level service and it's just so high. I, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen year after year. I, I mean, I'd like to not look at per, these line items here. I mean, maybe in overall, just cut three hundred thousand out of special education and figure out where to pull it from.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Or, or, or.
That would never happen. It would never happen.
It's illegal.
No, it's not illegal.
Yes, it is.
It is. They're all set.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Why not? We've done it in the past.
Why would that be illegal?
A lot of illegal things in the past.
I don't know, but it wouldn't be illegal to do it. You're not allowed to provide the services. You just have to figure out how to do it with money.
You would be, you would be. Right, you would, so, so we would wind up cutting regular education by that exact amount so that we could still provide those services.
Right.
There was no way we would be able to reduce the specialized budget by three hundred thousand.
You know, it could be.
Or, or we would have a very poorly developed budget and you would have a, you would have an inst- another instantaneous budget variance. Because at the end of the day, we're gonna pay all the bills.
But.
The thought process of cutting the budget of the students that actually need the most help in this district is asinine.
And we would spend more than that in legal fees.
I can't even believe that came out.
It's not asinine. It's.
It's not asinine?
It was. I think you need to be a little respectful here, David, when people are talking. So you need to calm down, please.
So, um, another way of looking at this is that we could, as soon as this budget is approved, start developing what the goals are for the next budget. So if the next budget goal is to try and find ways to minimize costs in certain areas, people have time to start developing that.
It's what we do every day.
It's different.
I, I, I don't.
When you.
Offense, but I don't need a committee to tell me that, what we're working on. I mean, Stacy's final three slides were the things that they're currently working on and will continue to work on of her presentation.
I know when we, when we interviewed for the predecessor of Stacy, one of the candidates who came talked about how they were dealing with, that their school committee just made cuts and how they were dealing with that. So we could do that. We absolutely could. The question is should. But we could also give direction that we'd like to see some sort of plan to help control costs, whatever that would be.
The specialized education needs five years ago were astronomically different than they are today.
And why is that?
That, that's a larger question.
Can't control DESI.
Okay, so we could try and understand that.
We can't control, the other thing, you know, is we can't control DESI. We can't control when other out of district placements go to DESI and ask for an, a more than normal allowance and an increased tuition. That's not something we can control at this table. We can tell DESI that it's putting an undue burden on our budget. We can tell our representative it's putting an undue burden on our budget and ask him to do certain things like increase circuit breaker, like try to incre- like try to include special ed transportation in circuit breaker. But sitting at this table dealing with our budget, there is nothing we can do about DESI's increase of out of district cost tuition, which, as Peggy said, was almost half of our issue. So, and that's a year-over-year problem that we've been dealing with. Which is one half of the equation that we deal with in terms of the number of students we've had in out of district has doubled. Um, so, and I'll, there are, we, I personally believe we should be more involved on a state level on telling the people who make these decisions at DESI and other places how much it's affecting our budget. How much the variance is this year and what, in the things that would like to have done that we couldn't do because of this variance.
Alright, in interested times, should we move on? Or is there more to talk about this?
So I need a little bit of direction.
Yeah, where, where do you wanna go for, for next, for the next, are we changing?
Are we okay with the recommended budget? I mean, that's fundamentally the question. Like, that's, that's what the list is. And that's what the discussion was. Is there anything that we need to direct Mike and Jeff to say we need to see cuts of whatever percent or a budget year-over-year increase that is less than six point one nine percent? That's fundamentally it.
I need these questions answered.
I wish, uh, I know it's outside the scope of the school committee, but I wish the town had other sources of revenue besides the, the individual taxpayer. That's where they need to.
The town of Wenham needs.
That's a community issue.
That's not us, but it's.
I agree with you.
It affects us, but it is not our.
The individual property.
Right.
I think it's late in the game to be asking this, to be asking, could you please develop a budget that shows us a three percent increase? Because that's what I would have liked us to talk about earlier in this process, instead of waiting for a recommended budget that comes in so high. It would be better for us to talk about this earlier in the process. Um.
So what would you have eliminated earlier in the process?
There are items here on the list.
So if we had given the direction earlier in the process that we would like for the budget to come in at three and a half percent, we might have been able to do it, we might have not approved a contract that was clearly gonna send us above that. Because we would have been in that direction. Or we might have, you know, Mike and Jeff might have come to us with, you know, this is what it looks like. Here are the cuts much sooner so that we could have understood it instead of later on in the process. So for us to give direction now that says, what should we do to get to a certain percent, I think is too late. It's like heart attack time.
You asked the question at the last meeting. What are the, what could be trimmed?
Right, and so now we have it.
What'd she say?
And so now, now we have it.
Now you have it.
So again, that has to be, the, here, here's the list. It, it's, it's whether or not now after seeing this list, are you comfortable with the proposed budget? If not, here's the list. Or what number would you be comfortable with, looking at the list? What parts of the list would you be comfortable recommending, you know, recommending to be cut? And then, you know, the committee has to vote on that on whether or not that's gonna be the proposed budget that we move forward. As I said at the beginning, you know, that I believe in the recommendations. After seeing this list, I believe even more wholeheartedly in the recommendations. It, it's one thing to say, you know, six point one nine is a high number, but understanding where it comes from is even more important. And here's a list of where it comes from.
And I personally, I feel I've already answered that question. I need to hear the answers to two questions next Tuesday. So it's impossible for me to give direction now, because I don't have answers to questions that will be answered next week.
And I wish it wasn't like in the very last minute to be able to talk about a workshop, you know. I wish it was earlier, maybe even in December, so then, you know, gave direction if we had known, you know, what was going on. Just, you know, as they ask for direction, it becomes very hard to not, you know, try to understand more of this budget in detail.
So there, there's not a surprise number on here.
I understand.
I think the out of district thing was a huge surprise when we got it.
But that's not on here and that's out of our control. No matter what happens, those numbers have to be paid.
Right. But that's still part of the budget and that is, you know.
But you have to under, but until you understand completely one hundred percent grasp that no matter what we approve, those bills need to be paid.
Right.
This conversation can't move on.
Right. No, we understand that.
I understand that.
What we're saying is, is in order to pay the.
But then how can that be a surprise?
But David, another way of looking at it is, in order for those bills to be paid, if we want to have a reasonable budget, everybody else in the district has to lose this.
And.
So those bills are a problem because they're either causing us to have to pay way more than maybe is affordable by some people, or it's causing us to have to lose things that we really can't afford to lose. So the question is, what are we gonna do about it? Janice's recommendation is one, which we have not done over and over and over again. We've said, we really need to be more involved. We really need to be more involved, but we're not doing it. We're not contacting our legislator. We haven't seen Brad Hill. We haven't sent a letter anywhere.
I, I do all of those things. I attend the day on the Hill. I attend the conference. I contact Brad on an almost weekly basis.
Right, but it's not.
You know.
On a, you know.
It's not on a committee scale.
Right.
But I, 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 I do do them. And, and, you know, as an, as individuals, I'm sure, you know, that would be something we could all do.
There's not much we can do about this budget, but there's a lot we can do going forward.
Yeah.
That we've talked about doing that we never comes to the table, so.
So. I'm okay with the budget recommendation. I think it's, it's a hard budget and it's.
That's one of the five.
Hard pill to swallow, but it's, it is the recommend, it is the level service we ask for, so. You know, unless we're willing to lose any of those pieces, which I am not, that's the number.
Jean? What are you thinking?
Well, I support the, I support the recommended budget. Yeah, I know from my conversations with the Hamilton side that they're in favor of the OPEB trust fund. They're in favor of what we contributed. And they've pushed us to include the SRO. I know that directly. So. I'm not willing to, to, for the district to suffer more cuts, or any cuts.
Peter? I just need some direction, guys. I'm coming back to the table in two weeks. Cause you guys aren't meeting again.
Right.
So.
We're meeting next Tuesday.
With the FinCom and the.
FinCom.
Right.
Yep.
But at the next meeting, we're gonna have to, right, we have to approve this budget.
Right.
Or a budget.
A budget.
What's that, Jean?
I was telling Michelle, you know, we're meeting next Tuesday, as she mentioned, on, with the FinComs and the Board of Selectmen for the two towns. But then at the next school committee meeting, we have to approve a budget.
That's right.
So.
And I have work to do between now and then if you're gonna amend it, which is fine. I just need to.
Get it ready.
The purpose of this conversation. Peter, are you comfortable? Everybody's kinda weighed in. If you're not, that's fine too. Cause right now, I'm not doing, I'm not making, I, I haven't heard enough to make a change, so.
Again, I know it's outside the scope of our authority. The, the towns have to find another way to step up with another, other revenue sources besides property taxes that are.
So is that your way of supporting the six point one nine, or I'm just, I'm reaching here?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, that's.
I'm just looking for direction.
No, that's what I'm saying is that, yeah, it's not a number I'm happy with, but I don't know how to get around it. Know what I mean? Other than raising user fees, but you said there was a, and even that, at two hundred thousand is what it's, a quarter percent.
There's a list of other things.
That, that's what I'm looking at here. No, but the other, and I, and I don't wanna see teachers laid off. I don't wanna see people laid off. I think that just hurts students. It hurts the students not. Um, and I always vote in favor of the students.
See, I, I, and again, I'll back up. I agree with this budget recommendation, but if it means that we're gonna get this budget passed, if after Tuesday's meeting, that the, you know, school resource officer position is still unclear to some members of the committee, I'd work with them on removing that from the budget in, you know, in the regards of getting this passed. I, I think that the budget has its recommended, um, is good, and like I said, I'm looking at that seventy-three thousand in my mind as a placeholder, which is something that's very important to me, that if we actually don't put in this budget, it's something we're gonna have to pull out of thin air next year anyway. And, you know, looking at it that way, it's a little easier for me to swallow. Again, the six point one nine number is hard to swallow, I get it, I'm a tax payer. But at the same time, here's a list of reasons why it is not an inappropriate number. So, and I think that, um, OPEB trust, yes, it hurts, but you know it's going to hurt, but as, as I said again earlier, it is in the best interest of this district long term. That's what we have to, you know, our job is to be looking long term and year to year, you know, so that, that's where, this is where the, the rubber meets the road a little. So.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not making any changes, so you'll, this will be, you'll see the same material on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Can you?
If you want to amend it on the fly, then we're gonna have to figure that out.
Can we do the?
Which we can do.
Can we do the donations now? Just so we're sure that those happen.
All right, so.
She wants to do donations.
Jump the donations up.
I move that the.
Thanks, guys, I know that wasn't a easy conversation.
It's the tax bill, that's not easy.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the donation from DECA for, um, business professional donations in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah, but it's a whole list of people.
Okay, you want the whole list? Okay. From Catherine Petit Obaji for thirty dollars, Tyson Goodridge for dialogue, uh, the best, or Tyson Goodridge with dialogue for thirty dollars, Catherine Rinald, um, thirty dollars, Amy Katz with After Nines for thirty dollars, Barbara Vanderwilden from Whedon and Company fifty dollars, Jackie Moynihan Homemade Care Solutions fifty dollars, um, Jaclyn Martin over the ra, with Over the Rainbow for a hundred, Lori Morinsey with Lori Morinsey Personal Training for a hundred, Sarah Wilworth, Will Worth, sorry, Anthony and Dodge PC for a hundred dollars, Bill Hogan with Hogan Tire Centers for a hundred dollars, James Waterman with Boquinos Waterman PC for a hundred dollars, John Calucci with McLean Middleton for a hundred dollars, Lori Johnson with Reed Core, Reed Core?
Yep.
Um, Inc. a hundred dollars, Susan Shelby, Shelby with Rhino Public Relations LLC a hundred dollars, Amy Jones with Sales Start a hundred dollars, David Jones with Lee, Lee Rink for a hundred dollars, Patricia Beckwith with Constitution Financial Partners for two hundred and fifty, Holly Schmidt with Holland, Holland Publishing Inc. for five hundred dollars, Peter Rogel for Gold Circuit Ele, with Gold Circuit Electronics for a thousand dollars, to a total of two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars in donations.
Second. Second.
David?
Uh, all those in favor? Yeah, Ms.?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the Friends of the Hamilton Wyndham Regional High School Middle School, uh, is it Friends of the Arts? Or what is it? I'm trying to figure out, sorry. Is for a thousand dollars for the middle scho, from the middle school.
To the Museum of Science.
For the Museum of Science. I didn't see that, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the donation from Friends of Cutler for eighty-six twenty-five.
Field trips.
For a field trip.
Second.
All those in favor?
That's a cheap field trip.
I move that the, um, Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Friends of the Arts for, um, purchase of a new full-size tuba for the high school concert band for two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, and the shipping for the tuba for fifty dollars.
Who plays the tuba now that the apples moved?
Somebody does.
Somebody will.
Second.
It's there.
Second.
I wouldn't have guessed three grand.
Me neither, cause I was talking about having one around the house the other day. All those in favor?
That's a Cadillac tuba.
For every time my son walks around.
Well, the one they have now is really like dented and beat up.
Um, all right, so that's that. We are, have to move into executive session. I'm going to move to adjourn, but we have to come back. Um, to talk about this and then break again.
Oh, why can't we talk about those two things and then come back? Is there, is there a reason?
What's that?
We weren't staying.
Yeah, and that, that's what it was, was.
Oh, okay.
They didn't need to stay.
All right.
For that.
Okay.
Um, so.
And do we have to give the long, announce the Long Meadow update, or can we table that for next meeting?
We don't know because we haven't talked about it yet.
Right. So it has to come back to sort of say whatever comes out of that, to then, to go again. Excuse me, so, uh, we're gonna adjourn into executive.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I move to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing a potential purchase of number one, number three, and number five Long Meadow Way and return to open session. The chair is determined that discussing this potential purchase in open session would be detrimental to the district's negotiating position, executive session purpose number six.
Second.
Second, you gotta roll call.
Roll call, Peter.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
All right.
Great, let's go.
And we're back. So, um, Gene, if you want to go and then we'll...
Yeah, so, Long Meadow update. So the school committee has authorized a district leadership to proceed with negotiating with regards to properties on Long Meadow Way. That's the update.
I would like to better understand what happened with the school calendar this year and how it was changed and a day was added. So if we could talk about that, even if it's not at the next meeting, but the meeting after?
Next meeting is for the thirteenth, right?
Yep. Yeah, that's why I'm saying it could be the meeting after.
We want to, we want to have on the agenda the, what was it called? H R two seventeen?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Is that what it was?
What is that?
That's if we can appoint someone to do the warrant.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yep. And if we want to do that.
If we want to do that.
Yes, please.
Do we have any updates on policies or where that's going?
Jean and I are going to talk after this meeting.
Okay.
Sure.
We need to set a date. As you know, I had a little problem with texting recently.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The only thing they have is the budget. And the O P E B guy is coming when now?
I'm working on that.
Okay, so we don't know. All right.
I've got a.
But it doesn't matter if we don't pass it.
We have a placeholder on March twenty seventh.
So, so if, if you don't fund it, that doesn't mean we can't still have you adopt the statute and do some administration, administrative work. I can still.
Correct, yeah.
We can still set up a fund.
Yep.
But not necessarily fund the fund.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think Wyndham did something like that several years ago.
So I tentatively have them on the schedule from March twenty seventh, but I don't have that confirmed.
Okay.
Oh, okay. All right, anything else?
Just want to make sure those, we have all caught up on minutes. Except executive session, we need a vote executive session that pertain to things that can be released now will be at our next meeting.
A past executive session meetings, minutes?
There's one outstanding that I think had to do with the teacher's contract. I'll have to look up the date, but Naomi just got it back to us.
Well, there's, there were four of them. Three.
I think there was one regarding your contract.
Two thousand eighteen all the way through till I did not, the one in December, we could not do because it's still open. So we can't release that one yet. But there's three of them. I take that back. There's three that should be, or I asked Donna to put them on for February thirteenth.
Let's see, is your out order? January twenty fourth of two thousand eighteen, April twenty fifth of two thousand eighteen, and October tenth.
Yes, correct.
Those are actually already in the Dropbox.
Okay. So if those pertain to the teacher's contract, do those need to be reviewed by Naomi or redacted?
They've already been.
Those have been redacted already.
Yeah, technically, technically, the committee voted to authorize the secretary to approve them, and now the council has reviewed them.
Yeah, so now we just have to release them.
You actually don't have to vote to release them. It's just, we could just release them at this point. The la, the last time when we talked about the, having the secretary approve.
Right.
Of the minutes, the committee actually took a vote to authorize the secretary to approve executive session minutes.
Right, but I think there has to be a vote to release them.
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
It's council, because the A G just wants to know that there's a process in place and authorizing one member to approve minutes and then release them is, is a, is an approved process. But we'll put them on and you vote them. All right, it's fine.
And I've reviewed and approved them, so.
Okay.
Last I had known, because we had, in the past, had always approved them, so I want to make sure. And Naomi had, yeah.
Negotiators were done. We gave, Naomi has released.
And I just held back the ones from December. Because we're still in talks on that.
All right, is that it? All right, then I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy relative to contract negotiations with the superintendent and not return to exec, executive session? Open session, I'm sorry. Executive session purpose number two. Roll call. Peter.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yes.
Shell.
Yep.
Jean.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.